It's called the meeting to order, City of Laredo, regular city council meeting. City Council chambers, 1110 Houston Street, Laredo, Texas, October 28, 2024, 5:30 PM. Time for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All in silence, please. Thank you, maybe seated. Mr. Secretary roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Honorable Mayor, Dr. Victor D. Trevino, present. Councilmember District One, Gilbert Gonzalez. Councilmember District Two, Ricardo Rangel Jr.
Present.
Councilmember District Three, Melissa Sigarroa.
Here.
Councilmember District Four, Alberto Torres Jr.
Here.
Mayor for Tampa, Ruben Gutierrez Jr.
Present.
Councilmember District Six, Dr. Tyler King.
Here.
Councilmember District Seven, Vanessa Perez. Councilmember District Eight, Alisa Sigarroa.
Hi, Ms.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of September the 3rd, 2024, September 11, September 16, October 1, October 21, all of the same year, 2024.
Second.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Before we go into citizens' comments. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight and getting involved in our local government. Some housekeeping matters and information to the public. We'll be going to Washington, to the White House this week. The city will also be submitting the Columbia Bridge expansion application. But most important, I want to make sure that people exercise the right to vote, as we are seeing a historic number at the polls so far. And I think we're on track to potentially break our previous records. We will continue to do more block walking this week as well. I also want the community to be very careful with pedestrians, especially children this October 31st, as they will be walking their neighborhoods in the evening when they are trick-or-treating. With that being said, we have a full agenda today. So I think I would like to request the public to be patient, as we move quickly and possibly through the important matters that we have before us. Similar to a courtroom or legislature, I would like also to encourage the public engagement and comments as their request, that they be respectful and within the rules and the decorum of the chamber. So we are still working with the context of several emergency declarations for resources and support regarding our water system, especially since there are still state officials on the ground assessing us with this task. I'm going to bring forward the water-related items, and only the water-related items after the recognitions, and then we will go through the agenda. So my motion is to bring up Agenda Item Number 115A1, A3, Agenda Item 115B1, Agenda Item 115B2, Agenda Item 115E3, Agenda Item 115F1, then Items 93, Staff Report 108, and on the supplemental agenda, 2A2. Motion second, all in favor? Opposed, motion pass.
For the record, no, somebody is coming here.
Okay, for the record, please. Thank you. Yes. Citizens' comments. How many citizen comments?
A lot.
Yeah, let me hold on. How many did we?
Yeah, a lot.
Okay, I think we need to do a recognition first before the citizens' comment, because we do have quite a bit of comments. Recognition for Ivana Rosell. Since 2022, Ivana has demonstrated exceptional dedication in her volunteer work in Alice Bird Project and nonprofit, providing homemade items to the NICU families at Laredo Medical Center and at Doctor's Hospital of Laredo. In June 2024, she co-founded with her mother Heartbeats of Hope to advocate for premature babies. Their personal experiences with Ivana's premature birth has deepened their commitment to this cause. So far this year, Ivana has accumulated about 80 hours of community service. As Junior Miss Texas All-American Miss 2024, she has supported various organizations, including communities and school, Laredo Crime Stoppers, Border Region, Ruth B. Cal Rehabilitation Center, Casa Mi Seicordia, and the Little Free Library, and has served as special guest at numerous local events. In addition to her volunteer work, Ivana is an A.B. honor roll seventh grade student at Washington Middle School, where she is a member of the STEM Academy and the 2024-2025 Sparkless Dance Team Social Officer. Ivana inspires to become a meteorologist, driven by a fascination with weather patterns and a desire to understand how weather impacts our daily lives. Her interest in meteorology reflects her commitment to science and problem-solving, and she is eager to leverage this passion to contribute valuable insights to the field. Ivana's academic achievements, compelled with her volunteer efforts and patent role, highlight her unwavering commitment to community service as her role as a resilient, inspiring young leader. Proceed with the recognition.
City members, you want to get closer, and then you want to move to the back, Mayor?
Just move right here, so we can get a better view.
Here we go, one, two, three. Can we get the parents? One, two, three. One more, please. Thank you.
All right, proceeding to citizens' comments. Maxine Roberts.
Revellis.
Revellis, sorry.
Hi. Oh. This one? Is that better? My name is Maxine Revellis, for the record. We really need a timeline from you to find out what happened with the water system. Where was the breakdown in communication and management of this Ecolite outbreak? Ecolite started to appear in our drinking water more than a year ago in August 2023. Your job is to come clean and be honest with the people of Laredo. I now want to turn to Item 93, that would allow the city manager to seek membership into the Legacy Water Supply Corporation. You still haven't provided people of this community with an independent study to tell us by how much our water rates are going to go up, striking a deal with Walker Water, which you did back in June. How cheap and available will their water supply be for Laredo? You need to tell us everything that you have avoided telling us in the last council meeting in June, which you held at noon, when most people can't even show up. And worse, you didn't even mention the name on your agenda. Why hasn't Laredo been going out to Austin and doing the same thing that Talisse is doing? It looks like Talisse is cornering Laredo and the city manager, enforcing us into a dependent and subservient relationship that they can profit from, while at the same time they will undercut the economic foundation of Laredo by directly competing with our trade industry. It's a parasitic project, and apparently, Laredo isn't defending extraterritorial jurisdiction rights. Where's the city manager? Where's the mayor? Laredo had rights to water supply around Laredo, and we didn't fight for them? Oh, where'd you go? This family got water rights from landowners, including their own, and then formed a local government corporation. Why didn't you fight for our water rights and do what Talisse is doing? Their city doesn't even exist. Has anyone even seen the agreement with Legacy, God with Texas Water Development Board? What does that look like? How come no one from the public has seen this? The administration is asleep at the wheel, and yet you want people in this community to agree tonight to have the city manager enter in a subservient relationship with Legacy? And you now want to cut XYZ projects after you didn't do what you needed to do to protect our water supply in the first place? This is unacceptable. And that's all I got to say.
Mayda Villarreal.
Buenas tardes a todos. La razón, bueno, español ahora, entonces español ahora. La razón por la que estoy aquí es porque tenemos un problema en la subdivisión de New Vision, que colinda con la subdivisión de Stanford Heights. Todo el agua, nuestros cuatro viviendas que estamos siendo afectadas, porque el agua de la subdivisión de lado viene y cae en nuestras casas. Tenemos problemas de fundación, tenemos problemas de mold, tenemos los patios destrozados, tenemos problemas que nuestros árboles se murieron, el sacate se murió, Soto está destrozado. Y yo, este problema tiene años, y no encontraba cuál había sido la fuente hasta que investigué, investigué, investigué. Y hicimos un French drain, y ese French drain se llena de agua todos los días. Yo saco galones y galones y galones de agua. Vengo con esta petición para ustedes, para que nos puedan asignar a una persona que encuentre el problema y dé solución al problema al origen y se repare el daño.
Mayor, may I be heard?
Yes, go ahead.
I know we can't engage, but can someone from management identify what district this is in, and maybe they can assist her?
Aye.
I don't mean to intrude, but I would assume that it'd be great that someone from our management team reach out to her to get the information needed, and maybe Mr. Porter or Mr. Ochila can work with her to find a solution to this.
I believe I saw your email come through. You sent the email, right?
Yes.
Okay. I had staff out there today.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Porter Davis, Peter Davis?
Peter Davis.
Peter Davis, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you for letting me come to speak before you. Trying to open this. So you see it on your screen. This shows Ms. Villarreal's property looking for my property after about six months, as it was getting worse and worse. And so my yard, I first noticed that my yard was starting to die, and I know it had enough water, and so I couldn't figure out what was wrong with it. And then it started to look a little bit more like a salt flat in my backyard, more and more, as it went along. And the same one in Myers, and I noticed that we had, there's another subdivision right next to us, and they built this big subdivision, they put a 10-foot, my wife calls it the prison wall, concrete wall there, and they didn't do the drainage right, and they actually put holes through so that that water would drain into our properties and mines very close, as you'll see in the pictures. This is a picture straight down. What you're seeing on there is the water that was in there, and at first, this was full of all these small little trees, and they all died. And then it started to be, get worse and worse, and bigger holes full of water, and we couldn't figure out where the water was going. So first, we started to rip down the fence to find out what was happening behind that and try to find out what we could do about it. And there were, we found many holes where there was water coming out right through the wall, and that they knew that they were putting water onto our property that was causing the problem. This is, this one I just put in the show because it has the ball, so you can see the size of it. There's, there was about 19 of these holes that were like this. There was a really big one on Myers' property also. And so we, so it got worse and worse. So what we had to do is we had to put in a French drain, just as she was saying, and that's, this is what it looks like when you dig the ditch. Then you put a pipe in there, you drill a pipe, and you put stone underneath, and then you put netting around it, and then you cover it over. And what happens is all the water that's coming from above that level will go into that and can be drained away in a safe way. But that cost me about $12,000 plus another $3,000. Now, this shows the yard where it was getting worse. Myers' property was full of trees from all over the place that were beautiful. The only one that's left is the lime tree that has anything on it. And this shows closer to my property and the edge of her property, and you can see on the left part, the right part of this picture, the water standing in there. And part of that was, we put skin coating on that because there was all this water coming through the block wall, and that cost us another $3,000. So, but on my property, it was more expensive because there's no room, as you can see by this gentleman that was working there, that there's hardly any room between the two houses. So we had to cut the concrete, dig the trench, and then put that in and then cover it with soil, and then put the concrete back. And this shares a picture of my foot there when the concrete's back, but it's cracking the foundations of my house, and it's pushing my house up on the one side, and it's cracking actually on the opposite side of my house because the house is being tilted somewhat. So I don't know what to do about it, especially because there's many places that are in this. This is a video that shares the water. It's kind of hard to see, you have to look closer at your screen. The water was coming down the wall like that, and it's coming from many, many places there. And they knew that the contractor, I used to work in survey, I'm the plant terran director now, by the way, and I used to work as a surveyor and a draftsman, and so I do know something. When they made the foundations, they didn't make the foundation quite right in this wall, and he was, he was mad because he told me he was mad. The contractor for that to the main contractor, and they filled up about four and a half feet, the ground level above us, and then they were supposed to grate all that water away, but it wasn't done properly.
All right.
So we feel that we don't know what to do, really, because it's costing us a lot of money, and what are we?
Management, can we see into his problem, please, so we can look at all his situations?
Mayor, if I may? Over the course of the last several years, we've had utilities go in there, we've had public works go in there as well, through you all, and I don't know what the issue is, but nothing's been determined yet, and I'd like to get to the bottom of this, so we can please get staff to get on it ASAP. Thank you.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, all have a good day.
Thank you. Rocky Wodinas.
Afternoon, Doctor.
Afternoon.
My main concern right now is Clark Boulevard. It has been, it was a disaster before, and now it's getting worse. Y'all planted so many trees, oak trees, that it's going to be worse than it is right now. Instead of making Clark safer and better, you have made it worse. First, you put fake cactuses, then you took it away, and it's all dirt right now. Not dirt, it's all dirty there. I had never seen the 2200 block of Clark clean till you all started doing work around there, and I said, wow, nobody could remember when was the last time, because they had trees there, that's in front of the, you know, the incactus, you know, house. It was all clean, and I said, wow, finally. You all are planting almost five, up to five oak trees per block. You know how big they grow? You know how much you all are going to spend out there? Every day, you have to water them. Twenty of them are already dead. You already wasted that much. There's up to six people working out there daily, that it comes out of our pocket. I don't know where y'all got those trees from, but I looked around, and basically, they were about, what, $200 per tree? That's only the tree, not the labor. Wasted money going down the drain. Instead of making it safer, you have made it worse. Look at it. You all planted those fake cactuses, you took them out, good, but you still have those sinuses. You're in Heights area. Nobody else has sinuses. You're in this area, you're in this area. Wasted money. Stop throwing our money away. Do it for better purposes. You got awesome parks that you can expand. You got a walkway from Alcubedabias Park. You know how far that goes? Have you ever walked at any of you? It's beautiful. All the way up to the river without hitting the street. Make it more beautiful for people to walk around there, instead of wasting their money on things that we really didn't need, and that we don't need it. Make it, make them turning leaves. Make it safer for everybody else. You made it a disaster, instead of progressing and advancing for Laredo to make it more beautiful. Another thing, when you put cement, like they did over there on Meadow and Saunders, don't paint the bottom part yellow. Paint on top where you have cement. You'll see it better than on the floor. I took pictures of Legway, where I went over there, and I showed it to you all the last time. It's a big difference. Half of the street is to turn left, and the other to turn the other left. You make it safer for everybody. Make it safer. Take the medium off, clean it all up, and make it safer for everybody else. Advance, let's go forward, not backwards. We're going backwards in this stuff. Please. I hope you all listen. We could talk about a lot of other things, but mainly right now is that part right now. That's all I want to say right now. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
For your time.
Ricardo Hurtado.
Good afternoon. I am Ricardo Hurtado. I would like to address this honorable city of Laredo City Council, the honorable city mayor, Dr. Victor D. Trevino, and citizens gathered here to respectfully ask from Mayor Trevino his consideration into the vetoing of ordinance 2024-0200. Myself, as thousands of Laredo citizens, were not aware that this ordinance would grant a raised monies monetary compensation on city council members. I believe that it is in the best interest of our city, community, and your government's administration, the nurturing and maintaining of an informed, knowledgeable, and active constituency. Honorable mayor, your veto would give a halt to this ordinance, which we feel was passed without the proper disclosure, procedures, and acknowledgement to us, the citizens of Laredo. We would like to be informed and have our questions as opinions heard before this ordinance may go in effect. Honorable mayor, if you give us your citizens, your people, su gente, the opportunity to learn the facts, procedures, and information within this ordinance, you will give us not only a voice, but a learning experience that will aggregate towards city's building of community, to its feeling of trust, and towards the love for our institutions. Gracias y que viva Laredo.
Thank you. Valentin Ruiz. Valentin Valen Ruiz, for the record. On September 15, 2024, council members Gonzalez, Rangel, Torres, Gutierrez, Vanessa Perez, and the mayor received a 40% raise. For the council members, 20,000 plus 14% add-on for the pension is $24,000 raise. For the mayor is 30,000 plus the 14%, it's about $35,000 raise that you gave yourselves. The leaders pushing these raises were Vanessa Perez, Albert Torres, and Ricardo Rangel. What loophole did they use to give themselves a raise without citizen taxpayer input? Well, let me tell you. They had to go back to 2016. La hablaron a una garra pata que se dio un aumento de salario en 2016 con la ciudad, y esa garra pata brincó a otro perro que se llama El A S D. Now he makes more than $100,000 thanks to his sister, Monica Rangel García. He's making more money than our mayor.
Mayor, point of order. You asked this to be not be defamatory.
La hablaron al primo, Esteban Rangel, primo de Ricardo Rangel. How did this play out? Hey, Esteban, on the raise you gave yourself, $50,000, it's a salary and allowances are inclusive, salary plus allowances to total $50,000. No, primo, I didn't mean that. Let me make you a letter saying that that's not what I meant. Salary is separate from allowances, and he signed it 9/13/2024. Did the attorneys call the other council members from 2016? I ask. I doubt it. In my humble opinion, taxes like, dirty taxes like this have to end, and the only way to end these dirty tactics and tricks is to make yourselves more, to make yourselves more rich out of our taxpayer dollars is to vote you out. $24,000 a year or $1,600 a month is a lot of money. The only people that refused and did not take advantage of this dirty trick were Alisa Sigarroa, Melissa Sigarroa, and Tyler King. To them, I say thank you. All right, thank you very much. Before we go into our next citizen comment, please remember no derogatory remarks. Fernando Baldaso.
Fernando Baldaso, for the record. Mayor, as you know, we experienced another water situation, something that's been happening often. I remember back in March 9, 2022, city council and the mayor went for a $50 billion, $50 million bond or money to Washington. I don't know if we got it. It was for infrastructure. But I think our problem, I mean, we always will have infrastructure problem, and that should be budgeted, you know, it's in the budget. But our problem was solved by adding chemicals to the water, I think chlorine, and we got rid of it in 24 hours, right? It's my understanding that we do two flushes a year. So I was going to suggest if we can do four flushes, maybe, every three, four months, and maybe that problem will disappear. Of course, you know, we still need some infrastructure. I do not disagree with that. But it will be something positive to start, you know, so we can, so the citizens of Laredo can start getting confidence back in the water. You know, we're going to start doing flushes instead of every six months, every four months, you know, and just a suggestion, okay? I also wanted to speak on, well, another situation on the legal hookups. I myself experienced eight months to replace a water meter for a project I was doing. It's not the problem of the people that work at utilities, they're doing their job, but I think it's the system, the way it works. They ask for so many papers, so much work. You leave your application there, they come back to you two, three weeks after. I mean, that's, that's what they do, you know? It's the system, I think, that's wrong. We need to make it faster or more efficient, and that's why probably some people can get tired, and that's probably the root, why we have some illegal connections. So just wanted to mention that as well. I also wanted to speak on Item 115 regarding the Santa Maria. As you know, I'm an avid cyclist, and I represent the Laredo cyclists. And I get blamed a lot for all the accidents there. They think it was my suggestion, which was not. I think we should have more bike lanes, but we should never take anything from a motorist or, it should be safer. I think it's a great idea to find I think it's a great idea to finally remove those bumps. Not speed bumps, you know, how I hate those bike vehicles. But that, that concrete wall, as you can see, you only collect trash and there's so many cars, you're hitting them because they're practically invisible. And so hopefully we can move that project and start soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse Herrera.
Some call me a poet, some call me the dude, but I've always been Jesse Herrera. I have decided to stick with love. Hate is too great a burden to bear. I'm okay. Continuation of my comments from the meeting of Monday 10/21/24. What's with all the gaslighting of America? From Trump and Vance's preposterous accusation of man bites dog to Laredo gravy train gang, their pockets still stuffed with cash. Their pockets are bulging like a bloated roadkill. I smell a taquatchi on Zapata Highway in our triple digit eight. There is no need to look for greed or abuse of power in Austin or Washington when in the city of Laredo, the stick-up artists are right before our eyes, seeking reelection no less. Get a veruensa. Now's our chance. There appears to be some job openings at city hall. Early voting is started. Do the right thing. Would you please give us a timeline of the anatomy of the catastrophe of the most recent citywide water boil? How does something like that just happen? Not even overnight, like a flat tire. The F-word. I would like to sound the alarm that the F-word, a type of fascism, is appearing in our local government with censorship and the absence of promise of transparency. I would like to sound the alarm that fascism seems to be replacing democracy. What we have today here appears to be democracy on the surface, but running below like a sewer is the eco lie of fascism. Why the, why the drastic measure of eliminating so many necessary projects that have been in the work for months? Is that, is it that difficult to chew bubble gum and pat your head at the same time? Why can't the water issue be addressed simultaneously while working on the other projects that were already in the works? Or are you going to start digging up all the streets in Laredo at the same time? And then, out of the clear blue, we are blindsided again, just like when we got bushwacked by the citywide water boil with news that the key to the city of Laredo would be presented to died-in-the-wool MAGA Senator Ted Cruz. Shouldn't the key to the city be presented as a prestigious award rather than a political endorsement? How coincidental is it that as soon as the citywide water boil was lifted, Darth Vader, MAGA Ted Cruz appeared? Just in time to receive the key to the city at La Posada. The very same La Posada that Cancun Cruz will run a wall through. What happened to no border wall? What happened to transparency? Do you want a Shelby Park like Eagle Pass, Texas? I believe there are more good people than there are bad. I believe there is more good than there is bad. Si, se puede.
Mariana Salinas. Mariano Salinas.
Good afternoon, everybody. Oh, good evening. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Trevino, City Council and City Management. My name is Mariana Salinas and I am the president of Sacate Creek Green District Coalition. This is a coalition that has been working since early 2023 to improve the quality of life for the Azteca neighborhood throughout the project led by residents. I am here because I am concerned regarding the mayor's agenda item which seeks to define non-exemption projects. The first thing that I would like to know is how do you define what is essential and non-essential? Is this the opinion of one person or a select group making decisions behind closed doors based on a political agendas? How many residents of the Azteca have you consulted with? We need genuine community input to guide your decisions, not while rumors and misinformation found on Facebook. Improvements to our neighborhood and Sacate Creek, such as beautification and restoration are essential. If you deny us this, you are saying that the residents are not essential. This is not acceptable. There are people who are not from the neighborhood. They are speaking for us and possibly influencing certain members of the city council and vice versa. Some of these people are hiding behind fake names in a cowardly fashion. I am proud of Azteca residents. They do not speak for me and never will. I speak for myself and the people in my neighborhoods. If any council member is behind this mere campaign and Facebook directed against my neighborhood and fellow residents, the people of this community will find out. If this council seeks to follow the path of fear and misinformation, then you are sacrificing us for the city's mismanagement of the water crisis where you left us without water for 12 days. You will be asking the public to pay for the cost of your mistakes. I am here to demand that you follow different paths and work with us and not against us. And to finish, yes, remember that all of you are sitting and there because Laredo voters. You're sitting there because we vote for you guys. So don't, don't forget it.
Sergio Dorantes.
Buenas noches, soy Sergio Dorantes. Estoy corriendo por el precito número ocho. En 2020 corrí. Tengo 30 años en la política. Sé cómo se juega esto. Le voy a hacer una pregunta a la legisladora del precinto ocho. Elisa Sigarroa, ¿por qué no has firmado? Quiere hacer antidopis. Quiero que le expliques a la gente por qué no has firmado papel. Todos están dispuestos a hacerse antidopis.
No, no hay, no hay, no engagement. No sé, no sé, nomás diga su...
Antidopis.
Sí, sí, pero...
Digan las drogas porque...
Diga su mensaje, pero no hay respuestas y preguntas.
Ah, no, no, no responder. Okay. Esto está muy mal. Bueno, del agua también. Espero que no suban el agua porque la va a llevar mucho a la gente pobre. Como se lo repetí la otra vez, ahorita hay más gente que me escucha y no sé quién les digo que se subieran el sueldo ustedes. No contarlo con los ciudadanos. Lo que están haciendo ustedes es subirse al sueldo y subir los precios del agua. Para sus precios del agua, para sus sueldos. No sabían señores. Porque los ciudadanos no están bajo el agua. Quieren contar con los ciudadanos. Eso siempre recuérdenlo. Porque ustedes tienen, como se lo repetí, ustedes tienen dinero y la gente pobre no tiene dinero. ¿Verdad? Como se lo dije una vez, van a unir ustedes a Laredo y la culpa no son de los pobres, son de los ricos. Porque ustedes tienen dinero. Ustedes se van a ir a prestado. Eso ustedes digan, no más. Porque ya basta. Lo que va a pasar a través de tiempo, la gente los va a quitar de las posiciones. Porque así es. Ya abren los ojos y pongas el corazón y la mano. No quiso responder a la pregunta como dijo usted mayor porque debe ser por algo. ¿Entiende? Porque se tapa, porque yo no me van a engañar a mí. Tengo 30 años en la política y cómo se juega. Eso está muy mal. Que le abran a los ciudadanos y los engañen. Eh, nomás les pido que no se abusa con la gente pobre con el agua, que no suban los precios del agua. Eso todo y que chequen bien los precitos porque no hay vigilancia. Haga de cuenta que no hay policías. Está mejor creo que no en Laredo, normal, los cuidan allá. ¿Y aquí qué? Ahí no hay policía, necesitamos poner vigilancia, han robado gente. Turistas, porque a mí me costan, debe tener un policía para ir un reporte. No hay policías, ¿qué pasa ahí en la noche qué? Por eso les pagan para que cuidan a la gente, a los ciudadanos. Nomás les pido a su favor. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. Roque Haines.
Good evening, mayor, council members, city management. My name is Roque Haines. I'm the project manager for the Sacate Creek Green District Coalition. I'm here to address the issue being put forward on social media which suggests that any improvements to Sacate Creek or the Azteca neighborhood in general would spur gentrification and lead to resident displacement. By this way of thinking, what they're saying is that it can be no improvement projects to the Sacate, to the Azteca neighborhood and therefore telling residents after having been neglected and redlined for decades that they must remain in the state they are in. I implore the council to reject these voices who are essentially telling the Azteca neighborhood, we can't do anything to improve your quality of life. Improving quality of life is essential and must not be allowed to fall by the wayside. The residents of El Azteca have worked since last year, 2023, to get major funding in place for their community and now forces are at play who wish to stifle progress and beautification for these residents. These negative comments and sentiments being spewed on social media anonymously in some cases are coming from, from people who do not live in the neighborhood yet purport to speak on behalf of Azteca residents and may be influencing council members or vice versa. Transparency cuts both ways. Just as it applies to government, it must apply to those anonymous voices which hide behind phony names and peddle phony ideas and notions that build fear instead of hope for this marginalized neighborhood. The city council owes it to the residents of El Azteca and everyone for that matter to base their decisions on fact and not fear mongering chismes. This includes genuine community input from the people who actually reside in the neighborhood. The destructive messaging being put out on social media regarding gentrification and neighborhood displacement is both false and a short sighted approach. There are many mechanisms the city can enact to prevent gentrification and displacement while developing and beautifying a marginalized neighborhood. This includes tax abasements such as the city-sponsored Neighborhood Empowerment Zone program. It is completely dishonest to say that any improvement to quality of life can lead to displacement. If the city council enacts policies based on these false premises, then what we have in front of us is an abdication of our local government and a double slap in the face of Azteca residents by telling them we are not going to improve your neighborhood. And if we do, we won't provide any protections against gentrification and displacement. Thank you.
Heidi Montemayor. Aquí.
Heidi, Montemayor.
Yeah. Heidi Montemayor. Luxandra Guerra.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Luxandra Guerra, for the record. I'm here to speak for different items that were placed on the agenda. First, there's an item about salaries. Melissa Sigarroa, you don't like the new allowances? Then why were you taking $20,000 the last two years when you were making $30,000 and $20,000 in allowances? You didn't give it up then? And how nice. Now that it's 50, you're okay with that number too? Last I checked, Alisa Sigarroa, Melissa and Tyler King, Dr. Tyler King, were getting a direct deposit check every month, like everyone else. If you really wanted to donate it to the city, you would donate it back to the city, including Medicare and Social Security deductions because you all are also contributing to your Social Security pensions with the city. Now, same councilman, councilwoman Sigarroa, let me ask you. You say you donated your salary. Right? Okay. To whom? When and where? To Daphne Foundation? Does that ring a bell? Daphne Foundation, let me, let me, let me think. Oh yeah, you're the president for Daphne Foundation. So you're using the city allowance to pay for Daphne Foundation at your house where you say you live, because you don't live in this district, but you say you live in that house and you're paying with the city allowance to have your own foundation there and you're donating your salary to the Daphne, Daphne, uh, foundation. You're just benefiting yourself. Who are you helping with that? It's for your, your own agenda, for your own self, for your people. Now, the last time I checked, your, your board of directors, there's nobody from District 8. How are you helping District 8 with that? All the friends that you have there are your elite friends, your rich friends. Now, I, last time I was here, I told you, we need to stop everything, all projects. Because we need to have clean water. And I'm talking about the Bynational Park, the theater, that you want to do an art museum? Why not bring it back to do a theater for low-income family? And move Bethany House away from there. Bethany House is a mess for the city, especially in the downtown area. The retirement now. Melissa Sigarroa, Alisa Sigarroa and Dr. Tyler King. Conveniently, you are getting that too. Dr. Tyler King, you are full-time physician for LMC and you have a clinic. Do you need the money? Why don't you donate it to the poor people? Instead of signing for a pension. Do, do everybody here know that you retire in four years, fully vested? And all these people here have to work 20 years to get fully vested and get a, get a check, a decent check. But you're a physician. Is, uh, Melissa Sigarroa, is your husband not a physician? Why don't you donate your money also? Now...
Mayor, three minutes.
I just, I just want to tell you something, uh, city council, Sigarroa. I challenge you for a drug test. But not a top screen, a hair follicle drug test. Thank you.
The rest of the comments are specific items, so we'll proceed with 115A. Requested by mayor. Discussion with possible action on extending additional, no addition, emergency measures to cover the economic impact, losses and any matters related thereto. The reason for this is twofold. First, the actual extension to cover the event period. And as mentioned, we're still working with the state for more resources. And so we need to have an extension of the emergency declarations so we can have it in place along with the state and Webb County Declaration for not only resources, but also for disaster relief help. And management, can you please give us, give the council an update on where we are on the ground?
Karen, which one, where is my? For just the declaration? On the, on the declaration?
So it's been extended.
I'm sorry?
It's been extended, the declaration.
Okay, all right. Yes, sir, mayor, city council. So the, the emergency declaration for the, the state remains in effect for, for a little bit longer this, this week, I believe. The mayor here has extended the declaration a couple of times and it needs to be ratified by the city council in order to allow the emergency declaration from the city to work in, in series with the, the state declaration. So we, I think the, where we're at now with the emergency declaration is to request from you to allow the, the mayor's declaration to be overlaid over the city now by the city council and extended through the, the end of the state declaration.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, um, extend the emergency declaration to coincide with the state, um, uh, declaration so that we can fulfill the obligations pending with the state and federal government.
A second for discussion.
Motion, second for discussion.
Um, what are the requirements for an emergency declaration? Is this, um, is this a legitimate way? Since we've come out of the boil water notice, is this a legitimate way to continue? It seems as if we're not in an emergency state right now unless there are some other issues that we're not aware of with our water plant. So how, can you just explain the process? Because it does sound.
I'll, I'll try. Yes, Mayor and City Council, so, so the, the, uh, the emergency declaration that the mayor can place over the city is only for a seven day period. And at the end of that seven day period, then it is to come to city council in order to get there because of the way the meetings are falling and everything. What, what we did from the first, the declaration that the mayor did, it was more about the testing. It was more about where we were at in the emergency. The second declaration that the mayor did was more about the entire response of the emergency declaration because we were going, we went twelve days for, within this boil water notice. And so there was a change in the emergency declaration from that time. When the governor set his emergency declaration over the top, uh, it has different criteria as to what determines that declaration and it goes for a certain window of time. So even though we're out of the boil water notice itself, even though our, our water is clear and we're, we're continuing on, the emergency doesn't just stop the second that, that, that declaration was made that the water is clean. We are now, we still have people in the field, we still have resources from the state coming to us where we're actually out there field testing, trying to find any other illegal connections, any kind of cross connections and everything. What we expect is going to happen is that we're going to see, uh, that essentially the groups change. We moved from the emergency of itself where it is trying to use TCQ and all those scientists to say, how do we get out of the emergency declarat- or how do we get out of the boil water notice there? And now we're in this recovery stage which we still have, uh, the free coring conversion in there actually helped us get control of the contaminants that were there, but we now want to extend out. They're still in the field testing, they're still in there, uh, looking through that. So we're following the, the state's emergency declaration timeframe and those crews. I, I think the day after, you know, a couple of days after the boil water notice was lifted, McAllen brought their team home, but we brought in another team of the inspectors and such. And so we're just in a different stage of the emergency in order to come out of that emergency in the right way. It just doesn't shut off on, on the day when it happens, so.
Could you, if you could briefly describe how we're meeting the governor's emergency declaration?
Now, the emergency declaration from the governor, it's overset over because of the boil water notice and it was at the, at the request of the, the mayor with the state in order to establish that, that declaration. What that declaration for the governor did is it helped bring all the resources in from the state. And so whether it be the distribution of water, whether it be all the people that are on the field now and so, so that declaration actually helped bring city resource, state resources into the city. The mayor declaration actually frees up the ability to utilize city resources at the, at our ground level as well too because we are governed by the budget that we have, but the declaration allows us to, to adjust how our spending goes in order to take care of the emergency first. And so, so that's where we're at with the, the declaration from the state is that we are now walking through their last pieces of that state declaration.
And where is the funding coming for these emergency measures from the city? What, what funds is the city tapping into to address the, the problems of infrastructure?
And most of our money is coming from the, the water utility, uh, within the availability fees, uh, the, the availability funds. We had some non-restricted money out there. Right now, we are actually adjusting the expenditures that we had in the budget in order to cover the work that we are doing because most of it is, it's just an intensified flushing, it's an intensified valve exercising. And so that work would normally have been done just in a different magnitude than what we are doing within the emergency. And so we're walking through that and so we're actually utilizing some of the money that has been laid into the budget. And then as we, I know that one of the presentations we have that we will be able to show tonight, uh, is where we were at. What, what did the boil water notice affect, how did it affect the city as a whole, right? And where did that, how, how much of that money was within there?
And are you going to have to come back to council and ask for us to sort of fill back these bonds that you're taking money from today?
Yeah, so depending on, depending on how this all walks the way through there, we will either have to request an amendment to the budget in order to bring that up or we, or we're going to actually have those funds, you know, they have to be identified to the council. It's, it, this is your responsibility for that. So as we, as we walk through that timeline that I presented on Friday, we will be presenting to you all of that information in detail. We're still evolving, that's our challenge with this thing is we're, we're coming out of this thing, we still have more information. I, I told somebody today, I said, every hour, we're shifting something within this. But we will bring forward with you because, uh, what I expect is going to happen based on this conversation tonight as well too, we're also going to look at our projects and which projects we want to incorporate sooner than later based upon what we learned out of this emergency. And so there will be a request to essentially either amend or ratify a budget based upon where we stand today rather than where we stood back in September when we approved the budget.
And overall, we are meeting the governor's requirements.
Overall, we are meeting the governor's requirements for this and, and we are, we're, we're within that. I, we believe that all the work that we've done on the federal, we, we are trying to work through preparation of all that paperwork to see if there's any funds that we can get through the disaster from the, the federal government. We don't know if our numbers, because that's partly to do with the, the loss of revenue and, and all of that. That's how we're going to do the federal. The state's a little bit different and the state was a partner all the way through this and that's why we had the water and, and everything coming in from the state. That's why they were in the EOC right with us. TDM and TCQ were all, all working with us in sequence.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. We have, uh, two comments on this item. Charles Martin's.
Yes, I have a couple of comments for you all to think about this evening. I've realized we went to a real serious situation concerning the water, but there is some words that need to be said this evening. We were able to get out of that situation properly. And the truth of the matter is, is we had brought ourselves into this situation, but our leadership also brought us in with some experts in this field and it got resolved. And this is a, this is a real important issue that I really haven't heard yet this evening, but, but it takes a team. And one of the things you have to learn is, is the easiest person to fool is yourself. You didn't do this, you brought in some experts and you got us out of this situation. And I'm proud to say that, that we took care of it. Now, there's a couple more comments I want to, I want to throw in on this. We, we, we have to remember where we've been and we've spent a lot of money in the past on consultants. Prior to your group here, uh, over the years. And I'm talking the last thirty, forty years. Lots of consultants had made recommendations to our water utilities and our entire utility situation. And we've had problems like when we didn't have any water because the water supply went down. Well, we didn't have a valve that could shut our system in and become redundant. The consultants are not going to do this for us. And what concerns me is, is the prior mayor came up with a five hundred million dollar idea, a five billion or five hundred billion. In about two days after, all it was, was a valve that couldn't shut in one of the tanks. And it busted a line. This time around, I'm going to say this and I'm going to keep coming back on this. We have to remember that we need to take a real serious interest in this. I think we can do it on our own. I, I saw we brought in people from McAllen, that's fine. I, I wasn't too proud of that though. I think we need to be able to do this kind of stuff ourselves and I know you can because you, you, you've done some things here recently that we had not done prior. So I'm really concerned about how much money. Right, right now, I know there's some costs here. Uh, we need to finish getting out of this thing, but I'm really concerned about putting together a plan yourselves and, and hiring assistants, not listening and doing what they say. I don't want to go through a, a budget hearing and listen to this, uh, five hundred billion dollar in two days after the issue. It was ridiculous and I, I, I hope we learn from our mistakes.
Mayor, three minutes.
And thank you for the time.
Thank you. Ignacio Nogosa on this item A1, one fifteen A1.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council management. Um, I just wanted to take this time, um, to, I have an item on the agenda with more to oxide related to water quality. Uh, but I just wanted to take this opportunity to let you all know that I'm an open book. I understand on Friday's meeting, there was a question regarding our 2021 contract and I, if you guys have ever, any questions, uh, you all let me know. Um, I did communicate directly with staff all the time. I did provide a report the next day, uh, that evening. But I just want to take a step back and I want to look at this project as a check the box type of deal, right? I want to turn around like Mr. Martin said and focus on the positives of those efforts. So we had been hindered with, on nitrification, which is loss of disinfectant in the system for five years. So Mr. Nebs shared 2019, 2020, 2021. It's actually 2018 and 2017. So five years in a row, we're hit with nitrification, which is very, uh, you're a serious health concern, right? So I take that, I do believe that you guys can have the staff, uh, to come out of it like you guys did, uh, after the 2021. I would like to share that for thirty nine months in a row, the city of Laredo did not have a violation with TCQ. So after that July 2021, we worked together. We even got to apply for a superior water system designation, right? Unfortunately, we had a cross connection at Black Boats Circle which knocked us out. Uh, but I do want to let you all know, it's not about a check the box type of deal with these contracts. It's about how we've trained staff and how we've worked together to get out of these situations, right? And this is a different scenario with this, uh, regulatory sampling, but I think similar measures can be taken. And I think they've already been taken with Mr. Buzz and, and, uh, management. So again, if you guys have any questions ever, just let me know and, and be glad to answer those, any of those questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Call for the question.
I'll repeat my motion. It was, um, a motion, Mayor, to approve your item and extend the emergency declaration to coincide with the governor's declaration for the purposes of federal and state, uh, funding and assistance.
Second, all in favor? All right. Opposed? Motion pass. All right, we'll proceed with one fifteen A3. Discussion with possible action and the progress report from management regarding the mayor's five measures requested at the boil water notice press conference on October twenty third, twenty twenty four. The five measures include addressing illegal connections through an amnesty program, rebates to the community, assistance to local businesses, proper staffing and public engagement with the community. Now, these were discussed at the last meeting, generally speaking, but I would like the city manager to go more into depth in regards to the amnesty enforcement program and the rebates and assistance to the local businesses. Specifically, what the amount should be as a discount for the interruptions of people's services and lives. Go ahead, Mr. Nebs.
Sir, Mayor, City Council, and, uh, I'm going to lean on some of my staff as we walk through this, but you'll recognize some of the pieces of the presentation that kind of brings up the update of where we were from Friday. Uh, and then there'll be the updates within the system as well too, so. So I, I focused this presentation on the mayor's initiatives because this is the, this is where we're at within the whole recovery of our system as well too. And so there were five initiatives that the mayor presented out there and this is what we have been working on a little bit. So addressing the illegal connections, we, we talked about our first day out there that we ended up with two hundred plus violations found in one day in the general area where we were, where we were consolidating where we thought the E coli was coming into it. Since that point in time, uh, the, the field crews have been out there and they've been expanding out there. Essentially like a drop in the, in the pond, the ripple comes out and so they're going from that area and moving out into other areas to try to determine how many of these violations are out there, illegal viola- illegal connections and, and the cross connections. The nice thing, and the, the positive on this is that we are not finding exactly the same, it doesn't correlate out the same way. What, what we, we have pockets of these things of the illegal connections, but it is not correlating over the entire city. So I believe that as we see this trickle out, when we're, when we're going door to door, we're going to find fewer and fewer of these violations, which is a really good thing. And I think that's why it was congregated in this area. With that, uh, the amnesty program was talked about, which would allow the self-reporting with no penalties. Most of our property owners are unaware of the violations. We, we believe that that is what's happening is that as a contractor will come in and help take care of their issue, the contractors will generally tell the property owners that we'll take care of the permit, we'll take care of all of that. Just send us our, send us, uh, pay our invoice and we're all good. So we are, we have prepared that and I, I will walk into this a little bit farther. I, I do want to say that as we are out there going door to door and we are finding the illegal connections on our own and, and we really need our people's help. That's, I guess that's what I want to make sure we cover as well too, is that we need our, we need our people telling us and trying to help us out. It's not just, we, we will go out and do free inspections of any work that has been done, plumbing work that's been done on the property in order to determine if it was done properly or not. If you don't have a copy of a permit or anything, we're asking, just give us a call. We'll come out and we'll take, we'll, we'll check it out to make sure everything's good, make sure everything's there. We are going field work right now and we are giving anywhere from five days to fifteen days, uh, depending on the severity of the issue. And so we are, we are making everybody that we do find these illegal connections, uh, to make, make those adjustments. The amnesty program is actually a window of time within our system that we will say, if you, if you will let us help you and call, give us a call, we will come out, we will inspect the system to make sure that everything is, is good in your home. And then that way we can kind of offset that. If we find something, we are not after the property owner to say, all right, now we're going to smack your, smack your hand, smack whatever, uh, in order to take care of this. So we are recommending a seven month amnesty program. Um, and this is so that we can get out in there and find any of these things that may cause us problems in the future within our community. Within that, uh, are recommending with that and I'll, we'll make sure that everybody has a copy of the written document as we are developing this thing out. Uh, but the program timeline is that we wanted to start the amnesty program essentially on December first. By the way, it's already underway to a certain point. If anybody calls us, again, we are not after anybody to find out, we just want to know if it's safe for everybody that's out there. But to give it official start date, that's, that's what I'm saying is that we're, we're using December first, 2024. The end date of the amnesty program is June thirtieth, 2025. We will do free inspections and scheduling those within thirty days of the self-reporting. If you call three one one, if you call our utility department, if you call our building department and let us know you want this inspection done, we will send somebody out within that thirty day window to verify that it's, that everything's good and, and acceptable. We do have the compliance windows that will give everybody up to ninety days to correct that depending on the severity of that issue. What constitutes an illegal connection, because I, I've been hearing a lot about this, is that what is, what is it? And we can show a lot of different pictures for it, but if there, if your water meter's been bypassed or tampered, that is an illegal connection. If the unmetered taps are, or unauthorized splicing within the system, that's an illegal connection. There are temporary construction taps that happened that may have left, been left active and not removed within the system when the, when the job was done. Those are illegal. Unauthorized plumbing work, expanding connections, those are illegal.
We have a question.
We have a question.
Yes.
Just a quick question. By any chance, do we have those pictures so we can show the public?
Yes, sir, we, we. We, we can put them out so that everybody kind of sees a picture of what they are, yep. And I don't know if I have them in my, my stuff, but I do know that we've been putting pictures together and we, we can, we can make sure that that's a part. I don't know if I have any available tonight.
There's one. Yeah, I sent you one.
So we might, we, we can probably pull a couple of them up. If you can, if you can find them, then we'll, we'll get them on the machine and we'll, we'll pull them up while I'm, I'm walking through this. So we'll bring, we'll bring them back up if we can get them on, over onto this computer. Cause there is a, there is a couple more pieces of this I want to make sure that we cover, so. And I froze up for a second here. All right. Okay, so how to participate? Uh, report the issue online by phone or in person at the water department, three one one building office. Contact anybody, get it, get it into us, we will put. We will put it onto the list and we will make sure that one of our qualified inspectors come out and look at that. Make sure you provide the property details and the description of the connection as to what the concern is. And the city will conduct that free inspection and then we'll give everybody 90 days in order to correct that depending on the severity of that connection. Now, at the end of this program, this is what the post-amnesty enforcement is. We, we need everybody's help with that, but at so, at some point in time, we have to say, if we find an illegal connection after this window of time, then that's going to constitute a more serious breach of our system. We're saying that we'll start that date on July 1st at the end of this thing. There will be daily fines of up to $500 for unreported violations. That is in our ordinance right now. This is not a number that has to be approved by the council. This is in our, our policies right now. And so they'll be up to $500 daily for, for any violation that's out there. This also includes charges for un-metered water usage. If it is illegally connected and the meter is bypassed or anything, that means they're using water without paying for that. Just so you know, all of our ratepayers pay for that, that impact of that system. And so we will, we will seek reimbursement of the water that might have been utilized outside of that. And then there's also the potential legal action for severe violations, tampering with the meters and such. And, and this, this is the hard part, which is really difficult to make sure everybody understands. We need everybody's help, but for so long because they're endangering the system for everybody. And so that's where we're at with that. Do we have a access to some pictures?
Yes.
Okay. Really quickly, so with this amnesty program, if, if, if everybody is ready, legal will prepare the appropriate legal pieces of the legislation for the upcoming consideration. The council will want to pass a resolution to, or a motion to authorize the program. And then if adjustments to the fines or enforcement are needed, which we believe they will be, an ordinance amendment will actually have to take place as well, too. And so ordinance, ordinance amendments take two readings, a resolution happens at the next meeting so we can establish the program. But you will have a couple additional pieces of work based upon the legislative body in order to close out and create this amnesty program. And.
Mr. Neb.
Yes, sir.
Man.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, if we are increasing fines, and just for the record, it would have to be an introductory ordinance.
This is not an increase of fines. This is in our ordinance right now according to the, the data. This, this is out there already, so it is, it is up to the max of $500 per issue, so. So yes, yeah, we're not, we're not seeking to increase those fines if we, if not necessary. We just want to make sure that everybody understands it is a daily occurrence of a fine.
Mayor, ma'am.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, we have a question, Mr. Neb.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I'm getting text messages, I've gotten phone calls all day today about the amnesty program for the people that committed these crimes because our PIO and yourself have committed crimes. And because of the fact that they're crimes and they're not being charged for the crime, people are upset about it because at the end of the day, their taxpayer dollars are paid for people to have to go inspect their homes again, inspect these industrial warehouses or anything that is, wherever the tap was illegal or it was illegal. So, and I'm talking a lot of phone calls, a lot of text messages. People are upset about it because these crimes that were committed, and I use quotes, crimes, that were committed or not being fined.
And Mayor and Council, what we're asking for in the amnesty program, and, and this, this remains in your hands now as we present the program forward. What I'm, what I'm saying, though, is that we're not going after the property owner for the crime. It's not the property owner. We don't believe that we will find very many occurrences where the property owner was aware that the illegal connection occurred. I don't have a lot of sympathy for a contractor that has the job to be done and they're out there saying, we'll take care of the permit, we'll take care of all of that. Just pay me, pay me for the, here's what the permit cost is, pay me for all of that and we'll make sure that it gets done right. I have no sympathy for the contractors who actually committed the crime.
And I agree with you. So therefore, are we going to be going after the contractors that committed these crimes? Because if the homeowner didn't know or the business owner didn't know, but the contractor did know about it.
Thank you, yeah, thank you for that question because this is the hard part of the other side of the job, right? Is that in my mind, I think, I believe we have to go after the contractor. If we find that it was malicious, if we find it was intentional, if we find that it is all done to circumvent the rules and everything, we have to have that conversation. And I believe that the legal system will allow everything to work its way through and, and do it in the right, right manner of what it is.
I think, excuse me for interrupting again, but I think the intent is very obvious. If you're a contractor, you know you need a permit for these specific things that you're working on, especially in a home. Especially in a business. You know that if you're the contractor, so trying to find the intent, I don't think is necessary because the intent is there. They went around the system and did illegally causing our people no water for 10 days.
Yes, sir. So the amnesty program is for our homeowners. It is for our businesses that hired somebody to do that work. And that's, in my mind, that's where the onus has to sit, on those individuals, whoever they, whoever they are. And, and so, I mean, you know, and if we have, if we have business license with them, there's a chance that their business license could be taken away. There's, there's a lot of different processes, not getting into the weeds too much with this thing.
I just ask you to please, please follow through with that when it comes to the contractor.
Yes, sir, I appreciate that. Yeah, the amnesty program is for those that, that were the, the unintentional victims of what it is. That's, I think that may be a better way to say it.
Thank you, Mr. Neb, thanks.
Yes, go ahead. Okay, so that, that, that was the last thing I wanted to clarify as well. This is the homeowners, they're not the ones getting the amnesty. They're getting amnesty, but not the people that actually did it, okay? My, my question is more about the, the time, the six months. You know, and not to mention starting in December. Why does it have to be such a long amnesty period? Why can't we do a shortened, you know, two to three-month amnesty period that starts immediately? Get it over with? Why are we going to give them all the way till June of next year?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and council member. We set the six-month in there because Laredo time moves different than anybody else's time. And, and I, but, but it is, it's really, I mean, we can shorten it up to three months, but I, I really, what we are finding in the field with our, with our inspectors and everything, we're finding different levels of severity of the issue. In some of the cases, it is just that they didn't keep up their paperwork with the, with the backflow prevention and everything. And, and that severity, it does match up to certain severities, but it is not as severe. And, and I believe that when we, when we talk about 80,000 customers in the city, if they were all to call and want an inspection and want time to look, that's what we're talking about, having that window of time in order to take care of that, that number of individuals. We don't know what the call volume is. If you would like to set it in a tighter framework, we can and maybe extend it if we believe so. However, you want to set that up, I just, I just set it at the six-month window just because that seemed to be a very good timeframe to kind of stop it. We could do it out of the three-month time, timeframe or four-month, I guess. I wanted to start it as early as possible and so some of my early, early.
Seven months, pardon me.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's seven months now, yeah, because we added in because we're going to get out there earlier than that. And actually, it's actually eight months if you take in November because we're already doing it right now. We've already said, we're not after, we're, we're not after. What we're asking is for the council to say, yes, an amnesty program makes sense. Give me the parameters and we'll prepare the resolutions, we'll prepare the ordinance adjustments accordingly.
Mayor, I have a question.
Who was first?
Well, I have the red.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Neb, I have a question on the, the, what you're saying about the six months. Is it six months for them to call in and report it? Or is it six months for us to have all of them checked out? Because if somebody knows right now that they had illegal work done, why would, why would it take them five, six months to call us and let us know about it? I think maybe they report it within the next two to three months, but then we have an additional three months to resolve all the call log. But I don't think they, we should, because if you give them six months, they're going to call like a week before the deadline, you know, we all, we all get, get busy and we push stuff off. So I think the call to, to action should be more immediate, not kind of going off of what Dr. King said. To kind of get a list of all the, you know, what are we dealing with here, how many? And then we can utilize and we can allocate resources if we need a higher temporary or whatever to get these cleared sooner than later.
And Mayor and Council and Councilmember, this, this is your prerogative at this point in time. This is just the start of the recommendation for within there and just giving that. If you, if you believe that it needs to be tightened up based upon the severity of the issue, we're all comfortable with that. We, we back it up. Everybody needs to understand as well, too, and that's why I brought this program timeline back up there as well, too, is that any of the violations that are not serious in nature, that where we have to just pull the meter off until they get the work fixed, they will have up to 90 days to correct the, whatever the issue is. And so you, I, in my mind, I think there's some sensibility saying that we run from December 1st through March 30th, 31st, and then we give that 90-day window and we're completed by the middle of the, middle of the year. But this is where, this goes beyond my pay grade for exactly, it's my recommendation, but I'm not set on having it seven months or anything. I just want to make sure that you have all the information in order to determine that, so.
Mayor, ma'am.
Yes, go ahead.
Since we're trying to create the best ordinance that we can, I just want to add that we should probably tag it that it has to be illegal connections made before now, right? We're not going to sweep up someone that's going to start, oh, I can get away with something if I do it in this timeframe. And the other is that, you know, there, during the, the inspection period and when there was a really big push of investigation, there were a couple of businesses that called and they were facing the water meter being shut down and expressed that they had a contract with the city, thought they were in compliance and the inspectors had not been out there to tell them before that they were not. And so I would just encourage the utilities department to respond really quickly because there are businesses that, you know, have, are operating what they believe in good faith. They don't understand the, the newer backflow regulator that should be there nor the risk that opposes. So if it's going to be shut down, that as soon as they remediate, that we get somebody out there so that we're not impacting their businesses anymore than we need to.
That is appreciated. I believe that, yeah, we have to do that. And, and yeah, and, and I guess on Mayor and the council on that, on that first part as well, too, hopefully we don't have contractors going out there. I got to get this illegal connection in before. That's right, so that there's an amnesty, but I don't think that'll happen. But yes, it is about what is already there, not about what is, what may happen tomorrow. And I think once the council takes the action, that locks that door down, that window of, of time.
Mayor, I have another question.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Neb, are you going to report on any known businesses? Cause I know that there have been a couple of businesses that are, that were the ones that were hired that created some of these illegal connections and is there, is, is there already?
Yeah, what, what, Mayor and Council, what we hope to do is kind of roll that information together. Very similar to like we did the report on Friday is, is that when we looked at the eight, eight boil water notices over the last five years, we looked at the common themes between them, right? And so what we will do is we will bring forward and say, here's all, here's, here's what the issue was and how it was corrected within there. I have given directive based upon what I, what I believe the mayor and city council think as well, too, that if it is a serious enough violation, we will pull the meter and worry about how to get it fixed as well, too. But most everybody has been responding very quickly to our request outside of the ones that have not allowed us entry into looking and seeing and helping for finding illegal connections.
Mayor, can I follow up again? Mr. Neb, I'm speaking specifically about, you know, the incident that happened with the water softener system. We have a lot of companies out there that sell these systems and they're the ones that are hooking them up. They were the ones that hooked it up illegally. And we don't know how many other customers around town and I, there hasn't been any notification on what the company is and how many other customers that might have repeated the same illegal hookup and those types of incidents because that, that caused a problem.
And council member, when, when, when we, when we talked about this on Friday, what we will do is we will send the utility inspector over to that water softener company and say, show us your, show us your list, who all have you installed? And, and let's find out exactly why there, it's being installed improperly from our, our codes. That, that's where we're going to start and then we're hoping that we'll receive everybody in there. But yeah, so, so we, we are, we are prepared to send somebody to that when we, since we talked about it on Friday.
Just a follow-up, Mayor. Do we need, does council need action for that to look like?
No, I believe, I believe this is well within the, in the investigation efforts of where we're at. I, I think that we, we understand everybody's direction for those things as well, too. But we, we have every inherent right to protect the utility from any of this from happening. So that's how, that's how the staff will respond, that's how the inspectors will respond. This, yeah, and this program here is just about how we're going to treat our, our customers as far as the amnesty goes. So this will be, this is that, this is the first part on there for where that is going. And I don't know, should we take any action on this one before I go on to the next item?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Yes, let me see, do you have anything?
This is the amnesty program. We will go into the goodwill conversation next.
We can, if, we can, I'll make a motion that we authorize this amnesty program according to the guidelines that were presented during your presentation. I would ask that you include the, the restriction that it applies to connections previous to when this program starts.
Motion second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion pass. We have two citizens' comments in regards to this item. I think one of them not here, Charles Martin already left. All right, Valentin Gries.
Mayor, before I start, I'm going to respectfully again request through the camera to point at council members as they respond to my questions. Last time, this did not happen.
Yeah, we're not permitted to engage with this publicly?
Sir, with all due respect, this is an agenda item and the mayor wants public engagement with the community concerning E COLI and the boil water notice.
All right, legal, let's see, what opinion do you have there?
No, he, he can make his response. If you all have questions, that's a different matter, but this is a public comment.
All right.
Ms. Melissa Cigarroa, in 2024, did, did your district have positive test for E COLI?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
I'm hoping we find out.
Thank you for a response. Mr. Tyler King, in 2024, did your district have one positive test for E COLI?
So if I may, this, this is not going to be an inquiry.
With, with all due respect, sir, this is my, my time.
Yes, sir.
My public speech. They swore oath to the people, not to you, Mr. Attorney, to the people, we, okay? So I'm requesting an answer. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Tyler King.
Let's see, what was it, this is not going to be an inquiry of council members.
I'm asking a question.
You can make your.
Yes, or no?
Your comment, you can ask your question and then we can proceed on with the item.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, so as I see, you're muzzling somebody who's willing to respond. And that's not cool. Ms. Alisa Cigarroa, same question. It, it's just sad that the attorney that our taxpayer dollars pay for is muzzling people that are willing to speak up.
Mayor, point of order is comments are irrelevant to the public comment that he's had up to speak.
People that answered me, this is what I call transparency. Common sense tells us water is our most precious resource. The 10 greatest civilizations vanished and collapsed for lack of water, clean water. Ms. Luciana, Luxandra Guerra, the mayor's cañonera, wants to end all activities funding the programs designed to protect and preserve our only water source. Example, the Bynational Park. Sadly, I have never seen her in our advocacy to protect our only water source, nor have I ever seen a cleanup efforts in District 8, Las Deca, La Ladrera, that we've had the last four years. I have a message to all taxpayers and everyone trying to kill all programs dedicated to protect our Rio Grande, our only water source. La agua es vida. Correa todo y sin ella nada. Thank you.
Thank you. We're in 83, 115A3?
It's the continuation of that second.
Yeah, go ahead.
And, and Mayor, and this is where I'm going to let finance step in as well, too, but I was going to cover just a few of the pieces. I'm going to step over the non-essential project conversation until a little bit later. But yeah, on this slide about the community rebates, when you presented this was the goodwill rebate program that we presented. was the goodwill rebate program that we presented to the council at the last council meeting. And now we're bringing it back with the, with the additional information that was requested, and that's why I'm going to have finance cover that. There was a request to know, we had recommended a 5%, 3%, 4%, 3% for our different classifications. We put together a 10, a 20%, and just so you're aware, the last time we did a goodwill rebate from one of the last boil water notices, that amount was 35%. And so that's what we returned as part of that. It was, it was a very similar one to this one. This one went 12 days. That boil water notice in the past went 10 days. And so we had provided a 35% rebate at that point in time. One of the other differences is that we only have essentially three industrial customers, and so they get lumped with the commercial as well, too. So when you hear the presentation and everything, you're going to see a little bit of that.
Mr. Neb, basic question.
Yes, yes, sir.
Mr. Neb, when you say that in the past it was a 35% rebate, how much did that cost the city?
We'll, we'll cover that with that, but it was right around, I believe it was right around the $1 million mark. So some of our estimates were, were a little bit off with the 5% based upon our customer base, based upon what they use it because that number is an actual number. The number I presented in the earlier part was a budgeted number based upon what we thought we might see. So that'll be the difference, but I'm going to have finance step up here and, and cover their part of that. Yeah, it should be in that slide there somewhere. Finance department? Is that it?
No, that's the rescue plan.
All right. There we go. Thank you.
All right, I'll do my best. Francisco Mato, finance director, for the record. So basically, what we put together with utilities operations is just a synopsis of what has gone to date. So the current boil water expenses from operations only. Total expenditures and encumbrance to date, $515,000, 521.44. Payroll expenses, not including above two days only.
Can I interrupt? Do we have a copy of this slideshow on our desk so we can review?
I don't have a copy, ma'am, no.
Were we not? Can we get them printed next time so we can follow along, please?
Yeah, we can, we can get that all done.
Go ahead. Payroll expenses, total payroll expenses, not including above two days only, 134,000.087, I'm sorry, 134,087.64. Estimated payroll expenses pending to be posted for 10 days of the water boil notice, The projected small business assistance, we're looking at about $500,000 currently, and I'll present that in the offer presentation. We have already $300,000 destined from economic development with what they had for the, for the incubator projects. We, go ahead and make available $300 for the, for that assistance.
Mayor, may I ask a question on this slide?
Yes, go ahead.
My question is, the total estimated cost is about 2.5 million. Of those 2.5 million, is that all coming from the enterprise fund for the water utilities? Or is it piecemealed with different sources?
No, everything's just from the water, correct?
So I thought, and I was under the impression from last meeting, that everything that was presented to us, for example, the small business assistance, the proposed credit was not going to hit the enterprise fund. So what is it? Is it going to, is it coming from the enterprise fund or is it coming from the general fund?
No, all of the costs are coded to the utility department for this purpose as well, too, because we're tracking the emergency itself. As far as where the revenue will come from, that, that still remains to be resolved. But as stated at the, on the Friday meeting as well, too, it'll be non-restricted utility money, the water availability.
So this 2.5, we know that's the total. We still don't know how it's going to be coded, whether it's from out of the enterprise fund or general fund, but we've got enough to cover it.
Yes, sir. And yes, yes, we have, we have the funds to do that, and you'll see some of that coming through the conversation as well, too.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
And just the payroll expenses, this is, you're referring to the overtime, I'm guessing? Because obviously.
Overtime and those resources that got pulled to perform those tasks.
Because our staff that would have been working anyway, 8 to 5 that day, I don't, I don't see why that should be included in this if they were going to be working anyway.
No, and, and because this is an extraordinary event, they had to be pulled off of their regular jobs. And so it has to be coded underneath the emergency for the, whether it be overtime or whether it be regular salary.
But as far as you're, you're going to be asking us to, you know, bring money from some other place to do it when the money was already there to pay them for their 40-hour-a-week job?
Correct, and, and we do this, we do this with indirect expenses all the time between the, the general fund and the enterprise funds because of the, where the work is associated.
If I may?
Yes.
I think that what's important to understand for those of us that went through the previous emergency, which was, I'm assuming, COVID, under an emergency declaration, whether it's a state or a local emergency, we have to code everything that cost the city in order to qualify for any sort of assistance, right? So even though they were working their 8 to 5 jobs, and if a clerk out of the library was pulled to answer 311 calls, then we consider that an impact for the actual emergency declaration to seek possible monies from the federal and state government. Is that correct?
Yeah, 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 and there's a little bit of art, a little bit of science within this structure because, you know, we, all the salary employees move their, move their time around more often than not in order to keep everything moving. But we have to code it in, in order to get there correctly. We'll bring, we'll bring together against, again, the full detail of this as we, as we solidify where we're going to be for that.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
So are these funds going to be reimbursed to us under the declaration or not?
Reimbursed from?
From federal monies like that are, are we?
It, it still remains to be seen exactly what all will be reimbursable because if we don't hit a certain threshold, there will be no federal dollars coming in to resolve within the city emergency itself. We will be able to get the business assistance, because we, we talk about the 500 in here for small business assistance. There are not, we're looking for the Small Business Administration and everything to help fund within that, but that doesn't help us with our response.
Well, and, and so can we get a true impact that doesn't include the reallocation to other department? I mean, to the emergency when the funding for their position was already funded in the budget? Like if, if the payroll was, you know, 1.3 and it was already allocated in the budget, then we really didn't lose 1.3, right?
Right, yeah.
So can we get a cost, like a picture of what the true cost was? And then are we, you know, just so we can understand the impact? And then, of course, we would still, if we're eligible.
And I'm, and I'm, you know, and we have this conversation a lot with like Parks and Recreation and stuff. Every time we do, we move them over to an event or anything like that. We code over into the event, but they're not out there doing their regular jobs, for lack of a better way. Just so you know, I don't see anywhere on the, on the slide for sure. It's not, it's not lost, right? It's just, it's allocated for what that purpose is.
Well, I just, I just.
It's a prioritization.
I understand that, but I just, so we can understand, like, the true losses.
Yeah. Yeah, and we'll be able to show you when Public Works came in and actually provided additional assistance, that we'll be able to show those times as well, too. I think we coded very well for all of the time over into this thing. So you'll see exactly which departments had a, a frontline response into it and which ones played in a secondary role, so.
And all this is being tracked through project members, so. Next slide. This is an example of a residential water bill. So just wanted to learn that the proposals, the, it's broken down by water, sewer, solid waste, environmental, and other. This is what your current water bill looks, looks like. So in this case, 29% of that water bill, of that utilities bill that you get, is only for water. So we just wanted to make clear that's the usage of water, not the entire bill. Okay? This is our analysis of average consumption residential water for period 7, July through September, 30-day average location. So the cost of water, average water cost on 70,273 average of customers, and these are residential customers, you're looking at a cost average of $30.71. Now, if we go with the 10%, it'll be a credit of 3.07. If we go at 25%, you're looking at 7.68. If we go at a 33%, we're looking at $10.13. And again, this is based on that 35.47 water usage. All right? This is the analysis for the consumption and commercial from July 24 to September 24 for the 30-day average location. Again, this is based on 6,885 accounts. The average cost of the water is 229.55. If you do a 10%, you're looking at $22.96. 25%, 57.39, and 33%, you're looking at 75.75. Okay, and that's based on water consumption only.
Wait, mayor, may I just, so, Mr. Neb, he just mentioned that this is based on water consumption only. However, we ask people to flush their lines for 15 minutes, and that also triggered the cost or increased cost of sewer because it's connected. So how are we going to factor in those 15 minutes?
So mayor and city council, what we are, what we are recommending based upon, I think it's a little bit, oh, was it the next slide down? Yeah. So when we look at this 30, don't get confused with the saying 33% water cost. It'll be, the 33% will be balanced between the water and the sewer usage. The intent is to provide the 33% based upon the number of days that it was impacted of the entire bill. We will, we will divide that over the water and the sewer portion as well, too, because the sewer portion is based upon the water usage, so there's a factoring that comes into that.
So whatever we decide tonight would include sewer.
Water and sewer for that percentage, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Next slide. So these are the potential estimated boil water costs for residential customers. If you do a 10%, 215,738. At 25%, 539,696.64.
Yes, go ahead.
Management, can, can I request that we get these printed out, like for us to look at in this meeting right now? Because it's, yeah, because I can't, I mean, it's, we're going to be making decisions on finances, but we don't have this in front of us and we have to take screenshots on our phone. I think we should have these printed out so we can evaluate the numbers.
Or just email.
Well, no, like printed for us now so we can evaluate. Thank you.
And mayor and council, what we can do, again, as we, as we set this stuff up, it is really to have the discussion tonight with the mayor and council, and you're going to set the direction to go. We will bring back all the legalese at the next meeting. So you don't have to make that decision tonight and say, this is it. We'll bring back a resolution or we'll bring back the ordinance amendments.
Mayor might be heard while they get those pronounced.
Yes, go ahead.
So assuming council votes on something today, whether it's 10, 25, 33, whatever it is we vote on, if we vote on something, does this have to go through public hearings? Because now they're credits of an enterprise fund, so you're saying that it's going to be delayed maybe?
If we do a, if we do a rebate, does this have to go through a public hearing? Will this be in an ordinance amendment because of this tied to the rate system we have?
It's, it's a rebate for this circumstance, but it's not a change in our.
It doesn't change anything other than the rebate, so it will be able to be done by a resolution.
So we decide if we, at this point, want to, more than likely, whatever we vote on would be for the December bill, the one the people get at home in December, right? Because November, we won't make it.
Right, yeah, yeah, and, yeah, and that's a very good point there, council members. So, yeah, everybody should continue on taking care of their, their thing, and then we will bring in. And, and I think that makes a lot of sense. The December bill will make that adjustment based upon the council's decision.
And, and let's be as not specific, but as easy as we can when we put this in the water bill. Let's not call it a rebate. Let's not get fancy. Let's put water boil refund, right? So people see that and they know what they got back because of the water boil or dated, you know, 11, November water boil refund or whatnot.
And I do recommend that we do it by a resolution, a written document, so that it's not just by motion, so that we can, we can at least have that within our hands. So I think the resolution makes a lot of sense. And so whatever action you take for that, and, and we, we do have hard copies coming, so.
I have another follow-up comment, mayor, if I may. So assuming we go with the 33%, and I'm on 33% because I, as much as an elected official or a representative of the people that elected all of us up here, you're torn between utilizing or saying, can we move our camera shots so the people at home can see the total? Thank you. So we're, we're looking at, let's just assume, $3.7 million, right? If we were to go with the 33%. Now, specifically, I've gotten phone calls from people. People have bumped into me at restaurants or out in different venues and have told me, I don't want my $20, use it to fix the problem we have, right? Don't give me a thin slice of cake when we've got a big cake we've got to take care of, right? And that makes sense, right? It also makes sense that we treat our rate payers as customers of our water system, right? And if you go and purchase a product and you're not satisfactory with the product because it was defective, as was our water, right? Then you would go to any store and ask for a refund, and they'd give you your money back, right? And that's exactly what our role is when it comes to the enterprise fund, whether it's the solid waste or utilities department, right? We've got to treat our rate payers as customers. If we didn't provide satisfactory water, then we owe them a refund for that, right? And I know that there's the argument of, well, people took a bath or took a shower. People used it for whatever reasons. They boiled it, they watered their lawn, whatever the case may be. Well, there was no way of them knowing, right? And when they knew, it was essential at that time, so the consumption, you know, is justified. With that said, I think we can go on and on with this presentation, and the only common sense thing to do is give the public the 33% credit. I think that's fair. It took, some areas saw a 35% impact, maybe, or a 34% because of those two extra days that the water boil remained. But I think the 33% is fair. And I'm going to make a motion that we approve the 33% credit, not exceeding $3,723,874.80. And that it be done through a resolution, signed by the mayor for the consumers to see this credit in their December bill with a line item that shows November 2024 water boil credit. I'm sorry, October, October, 2024 water boil credit.
All right, motion second?
Mayor, ma'am. So I, I just want to point out something. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
So I think staff is saying that 3.7 does not include sewer, which I think is what was told to us, but Mr. Neb has told us that it has factored in. So I'm going to withdraw my 3.7 number and just clarify the motion is for a 33% credit that includes sewer usage and have management put together that totals some for purposes of the record.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
So we're looking at, if you could bring the screen back up, 3.7 million dollars? And I want to piggyback on the comments that council member thought is made about the fact that people have said we need to fix the problem. I think the, it's incorrect to look at it as we're in a business and we are responsible, we are responsible for providing water to the public. But in this case, there are no private investors. We own the company, right? So when we say we're going to, we're going to refund $3.7 million, it's our company stakeholders who are going to lose out because in the end, we have identified a problem that needs money to fix it. When we look at the state of Texas, and I think Dr. King made this point last time, there are over, I think, 3,000 boil water notices. there are over, I think, three thousand boil water notices currently, or in the last year, right? So this is an issue that comes up, especially in aging water infrastructure. Do I think that something needs to be done? Because we asked people to participate in that flushing program for fifteen minutes, which in our dire strait of water usage was a big ask. So yes, but that does not equal thirty-three percent. If we rob ourselves of this money, how are we supposed to pay for the needed infrastructure improvements? And I will just say that there are other communities that don't have one or two E. coli samples that are found. They're much more prevalent, and then you know that system is a disaster. We were fortunate, and I don't mean to disparage people's suffering, and I in no way intend to do that. But we were fortunate that we did have water to be able to flush the toilets. We did have water to be able to wash the clothes and run the dishwasher, even though you needed to take care of the dishes afterwards. There were a lot of things that we were able to do without water, and boiling water at one minute does clear it of any pathogens and any viruses, and the city continued to provide that service. Not only that, but the city took it upon itself to find bottled water, get it to as many elderly citizens as they could, tried to move that water not only to the elderly with personal deliveries, but also provided several stations throughout the city every single day, so that people had drinking water. So you could either boil it, or you could get water from these stations. Is that a perfect system? No, was it inconvenient? Absolutely. And should we not have been put in that position? Yes. But in order to get ourselves out of this situation, we have to invest to fix the pipes, to hire the new inspectors that we need to track down these illegal connections, to replace the cast iron pipe that could have very well been the source of this. We won't know for sure until, I believe, a little bit more of investigation, to replace the pipes and connectors that are lead and that are copper, that need to be replaced. And if we take this refund of three point seven million, we are three point seven million dollars more away from addressing the problem. So I just feel that thirty-three percent is too much, and I won't be able to support it. Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, and I agree with the feeling of being very conflicted on this, but let's be clear. It's not three point seven million towards this credit. I mean, it's thirty-three percent of the credit is seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars to the residential customer. So, you know, the two point four million's already done. That's a wash, that's passed. We don't have anything to do with that. And then you talk about commercial customers. I am curious about that, because we're already gonna be allocating the five hundred thousand towards the, you know, the small business aspect. Is this kind of, is this five hundred and twenty-one on top of that five hundred thousand towards the small businesses? Because in that way, are they kind of getting, you know, double, a double, you know, reward? Not a reward, sorry, a double rebate? And, you know, that's my question.
And Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you for continuing on the conversation, because there is some clarification that I've been receiving as we've been talking as well, too. These numbers do not reflect the five hundred thousand that is the grant process for the business owners. So these numbers are not in there. But you are correct that the only part of this slide that is on the rebates are the residential and the commercial customers at one point two million, thirty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. The two point four million that is listed here as boil water expenses is our response. It is an impact to our budget, it is an impact to our response for that, but it is covered as an operating type expense, because we had to respond to it. The rebate itself is a one point two million dollar rebate on the water side of this equation, so.
Can you, can you address?
And then the five hundred, the five hundred's actually coming out of a different fund completely, because it is an economic development, it's the ARPA money that can go into helping assisting businesses anyway. So we're just saying that the use of that is for this program now, for that.
Mayor, I just have a slight concern about the commercial aspects, like, you know, people that are just using water for, let's say, a car wash or for, you know, construction, like, they're, I mean, they're not drinking that water anyway. So, and maybe I'm missing something when I'm thinking about this, like, what, you know, why do we necessarily need to do this? Because they're already eligible for the five hundred thousand.
And they are eligible for that, and we'll get into that conversation about the business improvement thing. So, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna downplay it too far, but as we look at our community as a whole, we rely heavily upon our businesses. And as you have all stated, is that we are a business-friendly city, regardless of our warts and our challenges. And so, having that ability in there, I believe that these are, these numbers could be adjusted. If you remember the first version that I provided, it was residential at this higher amount, and then the commercial at a lower amount, because we have other resources that we can help with them. So you could go in and adjust these numbers and say, look, we're gonna do the thirty-three percent for residential, ten percent for the commercial, and still meet the expectations of us being business-friendly within that structure. But that, in my mind, that's the way to get there. But the reason that we had the commercial in there is that, if you look at the restaurants, they had to serve water. If you look at the coffee shops, they had to serve the water. Yes, there are other commercial businesses out there that, the car washes are a great example, that it was washing a car, it wasn't being drunken. And so in my mind, I think you can look at both of these customer types a little bit separately from that. But the idea is that we're one community, and we take care of all that. Remember that the two things that the Mayor set out there as well, too. The first one was, we should be operating our business well, and that was, that's one of the things. But we also asked our people to flush their houses. And that's where they became a part of our stockholder group as well, too, by flushing their houses, they helped. And so why would we want to charge them for the use of that system? So, those are the two reasons that we're out there with that. And so, if you would, you could look at amending that motion to say residential here and commercial here, that'd be acceptable. But that's the clarification on this slide.
Mayor, if I have a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Does that bring the total, like, emergency cost up to the three point seven in terms of eligibility for reimbursement?
If you adjust, if you were to take the residential at the thirty-three percent, which is over on the right side of the column, and you move commercial down to any one, we would have to do the new math. It would not be the three point seven million total.
Oh, no, I understand that, but, no, the way it is right there, the three point seven, does that consider it emergency losses for the emergency that we went through?
Yes.
Under the declaration for.
It's in the boil water expense.
For potential reimbursement, to get reimbursed for the.
Very good point, that's a very good point, Councilmember, yeah. So, and so the motion on the table was of not to exceed three point seven million. If you establish percentages for these, yeah, we could utilize that number as our request for reimbursement. And now, these are just our costs as well, too, right? Because we are finding, and you'll hear from Miriam Castillo tonight with Economic Development, you're gonna also hear what the surveys are showing of what the impact to the businesses are.
Well, just for clarification, Mayor.
And that'll go into the emergency declaration, too.
So that, again, just to clarify, there were expenses associated with the, under the emergency declaration, this all goes into the overall grand total, is that correct?
Yes, once you approve for the rebates, that number is what will be provided as our cost in order to respond to the emergency.
And what are the likelihood of getting reimbursed for this? What are the chances of that? Like, is it likely, not likely?
Well, in the scope of, as best I, it's a really hard answer, because I don't know what our chances are on the federal side. I mean, when you're talking about these millions of dollars of losses from the hurricanes and everything, the boil water notice, they're a little bit more down there. I think it's really good information to understand, but I don't know how successful we're gonna be. But I believe that the effort for this will is that the additional grants going to the state and talking about replacing our water lines, I think there's gonna be a value to this, regardless of whether or not we get this money back in kind within that process.
But either way, we have the money, right?
Councilman, had a question.
Mayor, really quick, I wanna ask, please go, if I can tie in, is it okay to tie in my item to this? Because since the upcoming bills are gonna have adjustments, and we don't know this, but on top of all these adjustments, the residents are gonna receive a surcharge of being on stage three. And in regards to that, I know we're in the midst of fall, we had good rain in September.
Yeah, we need to make the motion. Motion, second, all in favor? Aye. opposed, motion passed, go ahead.
Thank you, colleagues. So really quick, my concern is, on top of all this, the residents are still gonna receive a surcharge kicking in this upcoming month. If they pass some, those gallons that met the threshold, and it's gonna cause a lot of confusion. And I know, and we're in the midst of fall, and I know we had good rain in September here and upstream. So I just wanna ask, you know, the utilities, if we are still in stage three, and why are we still in stage three? Are we still considered to be in a drought?
Yes, sir, and Mayor and Council, and there is good news coming on that front. And I did not wanna take out Mr. Pischker's thunder for that, unless he tells me I'm allowed to, or if he wants to state that. We actually believe that the Amistad is holding very well with the water that it has and everything. There will be, there is a determination being made right now as to moving from stage three to stage two. But that doesn't change the conversation with what you have, is that in a stage three, some of the people that have high uses of water will receive a surcharge if they meet that criteria. And so your request, of course, is very valid within that. Do we wanna send those bills out with that surcharge? Or is there a way that we can work that in with the structure of just saying, we're gonna kind of hold it where it's at, and not recognize that surcharge? We actually believe, we're actually seeing the really good signs out of the water and everything, the watershed. I believe Amistad's been holding at over twenty-one percent up and down. So we, twenty percent is our limit, where we go from stage two to stage three. As we've been watching that, of course, we watched the tributaries that feed into the Amistad as well, too. And we are seeing very good signs as we come into the fall, into the winter. We believe that it's going to be able to hold fairly well. We're still in a drought kind of condition, but we use the Amistad as one of those criteria that trigger our determination of the stages. So, we believe that that will be forthcoming.
Yes, go ahead. Do we know any, what percentage or what stage we're at, or what percentage, twenty percent, or what percentage we're at at the Amistad, so we can come off that drought charge?
Yeah, I will tell you that Mr. Pischker is walking through all that information in order to determine exactly.
Do you have an update for right now?
We didn't have an update. I was going to actually put him in front of you next Monday at the next council meeting to kind of cover that stuff as the utility report. We were trying to keep it on the boil water notice and what you guys have put onto this agenda, so. But we, yeah, we can get that information all packaged together for you and show you exactly what the impact of our stage three or stage two, and how successful we were, and then where we're at with the water as well, too.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Neb, then I'll defer my comments for the next Monday.
But I believe it is warranted to have that conversation, and so we can bring that forward as far as the, if that's what the Council wishes to do, to recognize what that impact is. Because I think we are working through exactly how many of them. We don't have that many, by the way. Most everybody followed our stage three requirements, so we're not gonna see a lot of them.
So, most of the time, most of the comments that we've been receiving are from people sitting here, community bills, and seeing that in October, charging over. No, that one?
Okay.
So we're seeing that we're having calls from people and showing us our bill that says, it's the, they started in October twenty, October first on the charges. And if I'm not, do you have the?
I was gonna see which bill, this is a knockover bill.
That's just a sample.
It is a sample.
For referencing point, that's all.
Okay, so they're addressing, and they say it's October first, and they're getting the charge for the, I'm not saying this one. I'm saying that, like, people from the residents are showing us bills, are showing that they're getting charged, or the charges from October first are gonna start on October first. So that's what they're showing us. I don't know, Ms. Angie, can you clear this up for us? Or, because that's why I think Mr. Councilman Gonzalez is addressing this matter.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Angie, County Operations Manager, for the record. There is no drought surcharge that is being enforced right now. We do not have the ability within the IT system right now in order to be charging people, and we had mentioned that in some previous council meetings. So there is no surcharge being charged if somebody exceeds the limits.
Mayor May.
And Mr. Mayor, I think you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
At the last, two meetings ago, there was a motion made to suspend them, to suspend the surcharge. And I did talk to staff, because there was no way for us to compute it within the billing system that we had. You all gave us direction not to impose it, to freeze it.
There is a little notice, there was a notice within the bill that said those charges were forthcoming, but that was just a, it was just a notification, it wasn't actually charging anybody anything. It's just like the way you see this sample right now, where it's water and sewer rates. It was a notification, like, in this case, saying water and sewer rates are forthcoming, right? Are they gonna increase?
Public knows we suspended it.
So you're saying, Ms. Condolee, you're saying that there wasn't, there wasn't a charge for, there was no surcharges.
There has not been.
So the bill that they received, that was their original bill, for the public, the bill that the public received was the original bill, what the usage, the consumption of water and the sewage and all that, what they were using.
Correct.
Right, all right, Councilman.
Thank you so much. Now, Ms. Condolee, let's play a game where I say a bunch of things, and you tell me where I'm wrong, or if I'm wrong. Okay, so, my, no, I just wanna clarify this, just, here's what happened. We passed, for the public watching at home, there was, you asked for us for surcharges during, only during stage three drought, where people would pay ten dollars for every thousand gallons of water used, over twenty thousand gallons for residential, right?
Correct.
Okay, that average use is fifteen thousand gallons per month. You gave a little five thousand gallon buffer, and we said ten dollars for every thousand gallons over twenty thousand. So it's six thousand over, because you gotta get to twenty-one thousand to actually get charged. But we never did it, because we didn't even have the system in place to do it. It's never been done. And two council meetings ago, I did make a motion, because of that information, that we should not go back and retroactively charge customers from two months ago, once we finally get our IT system in order. You know, because that would be kind of wrong to say, oh, we weren't really ready to charge you, but now we are from two months ago. And I did make that motion, we barely had a quorum, and it didn't pass. So, if it be permitted, we didn't have enough people really to make the motion, and if it could be permitted, I would ask, I'll make the motion.
You don't have to notice.
It was just the little notification.
My motion, my motion is that we do not charge the surcharge as long as we are not able to technologically admit it and not retroactively do it. Mr. Gonzalez's ideas? What would you like? So, the idea is that we wouldn't retroactively go back and charge a surcharge during stage three drought tendencies if we do not have the technology available to do it that month.
Well, no, I think the item does, talks about surcharges on stage three, to evaluate them.
Is there a point of order, though, that since this motion already failed, Dr. King cannot bring it back?
Everybody remember to address the chair, please.
Yes, I mean, I believe that it was answered, to Councilmember Gonzalez's motion, that there were no surcharges charged, it was just a notification, but Dr. King, you want to just.
Officially make a motion.
The notification was that they were gonna come, but we never charged them because we couldn't, because we didn't have the technology. But we eventually theoretically will get the technology, and we'll then, the point that Councilmember Gonzalez is trying to make is that on people's December bill, if we're still in stage three, they don't get a ten dollar rebate and then a ten dollar surcharge.
So don't charge them whether we get the technology or not, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Yes.
Mr. Wayne, is Dr. King able to make the motion if it was already brought up and it failed?
Who knows?
It was, Dr. King reported that it was made, it failed with a very small quorum. There weren't very many of us up here, so did it need to come from someone else?
Well, how about this, if I may, just to clean it up, because I don't think it, I thought it was more addressed, how about you make a amended motion, and then you can all decide whether you want to take up that amended motion or not.
Councilman, did you help us? Do you repeat the motion, Mr. King?
Yes, um, the motion...
To amend the motion, right?
The amended part of the motion, uh, was to not, um, uh, through the, through the end of calendar year, twenty twenty-four, uh, to not, uh, charge, uh, anyone for the surcharge since we, the city was not prepared with the technology and in the context of a water bowl notice, uh, not wanting people to get a surcharge in a month where they're also gonna get an equivalent rebate.
Second.
Motion second.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Um... We need to, we're, we're very good enough, said this for the last eight years, and I'll say it probably still till the last meeting I'm here, whenever we speak about an ordinance or enforcement. The city and the council is very good about jumping the gun and just scaring people, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that. We're not taking it serious anymore, because that's all we do. We just put scare tactics out there and never enforce a single thing that's needed, right? And this is exactly, we spent so many meetings speaking about this fee and no one came up here to say, hey, timeout, we don't have a way of charging, so how about y'all just let us figure it out, let's come back whenever we figure it out. No one from utilities, no one from any department came up or IT to say, timeout, council, stop wasting your time, cause that's what we did. We wasted our time probably for about three months, meeting, after meeting, after meeting, it's disappointing. And that is probably why no one at home takes it serious. Because we pass all of these, you know, code enforcement ordinances and we do nothing about it. First, because we're limited in staff, now because apparently no one had the brilliant idea to come up here and say, hold on, we can't charge, we can't put this in the, in people's bills. And it's just unacceptable, especially because the enterprise fund is a business. And for this specific purpose, we even had projections up to how much money we were supposed to generate that was going to potentially go to a secondary water source. All for nothing, right? And I know, Mr. Neve, that UN management can't, don't understand, or have the time, not rather understand, the specifics are very department responsibilities, but this is something that utilities should have put up to us or IT. And they were absent again at bringing this to our attention. Um, I hope that moving forward and with the new council coming in, we're much more prepared. Um, it's not a pointing fingers thing, but it's been something that I've been frustrated with for the last eight years. And I'm optimistic that you're, as you continue in your journey as city manager, you're gonna be able to address this and make it better. But let's please start, everyone in this room, whether you're a director or city employee, if you know that something's not gonna be able to be done, raise your hand and please let your director or director, let your respective assistant city manager or city manager know. We need to know these things, especially when, again, we wasted, at this point, it was wasted time, meeting after meeting. Because now we find out that it was never to be, we even wasted ink letting people know, we're gonna charge you. Oh, never mind, we can't charge you on those bills.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I, I will just say that this item did come back and Ms., uh, Kanto did speak to us and tell us, and that is why Dr. King put the motion out and it did fail. Now, we had very, we only had quorum, right? There were several council members that were not here present, maybe that's why they did not hear it, I don't know. But it, it did, it did come back and this isn't the first time we're hearing about it, just, just to clarify.
May not be the first time, but it came back after the notices were printed and sent out. They should have, that should have never happened.
Yeah, that's right.
Right? So whether we're here or not, that's irrelevant. It is city business, staff should have caught on to this.
So, Mayor, call for the question? All right. You want discussion? All right. Call for the question, one fifteen, eight, three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Mayor, what, was there clarification on residential thirty-three and then commercials ten?
That was the most, yeah.
Well, we, we will be putting that together in a resolution as well, coming forward to you, and so you'd be...
There was a motion on the floor.
Correct.
And we should have never voted on Dr. King's motion until we wrapped up the... So he offered as an amendment, we voted on the amendment. What I'm gonna do is, I'm going to withdraw my motion, so that withdraws his, uh, the second and his amendment. Now you can make the motion all over again.
All right, go ahead.
Is that better? Or I'll make a motion, since apparently his motion failed, according to Councilman Sigarro. I'll make a motion.
But because the amended motion, uh, was voted on, it was passed.
The amendment to the motion, but now we need to vote on the actual motion. My motion included a thirty-three percent, management saying, hold on, let's come back. So we amend the motion again to have staff bring back a report on the thirty-three percent?
Well, if you amend the motion, then what you voted on was the amended motion.
We voted to accept the amendment.
Right.
But the motion on the floor has not passed. The amendment passed.
Yes.
To add to the motion, but the actual motion on the floor has not passed. We voted to accept the amendment. So now it's the motion of the thirty-three percent plus his amendment. So I'm gonna make another amendment.
Do you want, yes, exactly.
Right?
Make another amendment, if that passes, then it'll be the motion with the two amendments, yes.
So I'm gonna make an amendment to have staff bring back the thirty-three percent as a consideration with a draft resolution and any other information they feel necessary to present before the council.
That includes SOR.
For approval, including the SOR.
All right.
So Councilman Sigarro was the one that seconded my motion for discussion.
Yes, I did, I did second, I did second the motion for discussion.
All right. We're just asking staff to read it.
So we're just asking staff to bring it back.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Are we clear what we're voting on?
Yes, sir.
Which includes the amendment.
Including the amendment.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Repose, motion passed.
Mayor, yeah, and for the sense of urgency and everything, we intend to try to get that to you for Monday.
All right.
Okay. Okay, um, the next part of the conversation goes into the conversation with nonessential projects and such. And I, um, as of, as of when this came through, in order to prepare for tonight from, from where we're at, we did put together a...
Briefly, if I may, so just for housekeeping rules, your next part of the presentation for purposes of Mr. City Secretary are to address item one fifteen, B one. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
One fifteen. Not B two, just one fifteen, B one. And supplemental, two A, two. Right? Okay, so we're taking those two items off the list.
All right.
All right. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, so as we, as we talk about essential to nonessential projects and such, the, the idea is that we have to lay out what the definitions are, and you heard some of that from, uh, from our, some of our citizen comments as well, too. So we are, uh, I am recommending, uh, within this structure, here's some criteria for determining nonessential projects within the scope of what we understand. And we haven't had a lot of conversation about where we wanna go with this thing. So for me, it is establishing the project, uh, the, the criteria over it as a whole. And of course, there, we broke down the, the, uh, determining of the essential to the nonessential, the public health, the operational efficiencies, the regulatory compliance requirements, and economic impact and revenue generating. So we have a number of projects out there that do different things. Of course, under the public health and safety impact, we, we do consider any critical projects affecting the public well-being as essential. Any, any projects that are aesthetic or non-urgent projects, and that'll be something that you'll have to determine as the, as the elected body, but those are the, what we consider underneath pelvic health and safety as being nonessential. And when you look at operational efficiency and continuity, the essential project scope, the broadest level on that is that projects that maintain are critical services. The nonessential are the routine upgrades without any immediate impact. Uh, under regulatory compliance requirements, projects that are mandated by the state and federal authorities, we need to continue on. Those are essential projects. But nonessential are projects without strict regulatory deadlines. That means we can move them around and we can adjust accordingly to make sure that we're taking care of the, the highest priority items first. Then there's the economic impact and revenue generation. The essential is the projects that are tied to revenue or economic development. The nonessential are the projects with long-term or minimal financial impact. And so that's the criteria that we were using as I was putting together the program as to how to determine an, an essential project and a nonessential project. I did wanna share with you, because a lot of our projects are grant funded. And because of the grant funding, there are certain restrictions that kinda come through there. There's timeline compliance, if failure to result, may result in repayment of the grants. And, and so we wanna be careful about eliminating anything that has that impact on the grants. There's a loss of eligibility concern as well, too, is that it could affect future grant applications if we can't manage those projects accordingly. There are financial penalties that happen with some grants that impose penalties for the delays. And then there's also the ability that we may have to forfeit additional matching funds that postpone. So there are certain projects at certain levels out there that we wanna make sure that we continue on with that process. So this criteria here, this is the reporting process that we will, uh, one of the parts of this thing is having all our directors look at their projects and say, which projects can be postponed? They will lay out a project overview, the financial impact, the operational impact, the community impact, the report submission, and the final decision by the city council. So as you look at it from your viewpoint, because you have every ability as the elected body to make a determination which projects should be on hold, which project should move forward, I'm going to have the same thing done out of our department directors, so that we can kinda say, these are the areas that have the biggest impact. And so, uh, but this'll be what it's going to look like. We will deliver it to you based upon this. What I would ask as well, too, is that if you determine that any projects that you want to put on hold, let us do this analysis for you, too. Let us have finance look at it, let us have economic look at it, let us have those department directors look at these projects as well, too. And then we'll deliver back a full, a report process that will help you determine that, that everything has been identified and is laid out there. Uh, just some of the procedures for pausing nonessential projects, because some of them are maybe underway with our contractors, some of them may be under different levels of whatever it is. We will have to, if, if we do determine any of these projects are nonessential and we are not going to move forward with them today, what we are saying is that we will send out a suspension notice, once the council makes that determination, within five business days, saying, please stop this project. And we'll make sure that is, we will also, any kind of grants that are out there, we will negotiate extensions or amendments if necessary to kinda allow us to kinda bring them back around. And then, uh, there will be some compliance processes within our departments to adhere to the moratorium directives. So as you put together this model of, of the plan and what we're going to impact, this is, these are the procedures that we will use with the, uh, with that. Just really quickly, of course, we're asking for the compliance and, and everything, so we will be talking to our departments about, uh, any subject of the audit. If we don't stop them fast enough, then the impact will continue and perpetuate. Uh, departments may face a, fight budget adjustments. If we take a project out or we moratorium a project, we have to return the money or anything else of that nature, we may have to amend their budget in order to bring it back in line with the amount of revenue that we have there. And then, of course, contractor penalties, if there's any unauthorized continuation, that could have resulted in legal penalties as well, too. So within this, within the plan, um, and I, I believe I, did we get a copy for everybody? Okay, so you, the council has a copy of this, it is a draft form of that, but it lays out exactly how to walk through this. So it is a structured process in order to manage the projects during this. It does prioritize, we, we stay with the projects that are the most important, the essential projects that are most important to us, and then we back off the other ones if it's determined by you as the elected body to be a nonessential project. So, um, that's what we were able to put together based upon, Mayor, on your initiative to say, we need to focus our attention on this issue.
Yeah, one, one other thing I was gonna ask is, uh, the two percent of every department, including utilities, to be paid for art, that was in the budget. Even what that department bonds out, because that's not money that's, that's available, it has, has to be bonded out. Doesn't make any sense, especially if the department doesn't have enough money to pay for inspectors. And a, a separate standalone presentation of what's relevant cost to objectives, you know, art directors should be paid sixty-three, twenty-three thousand dollars, according to this. And a, a supervisor for water is pays on, has only paid forty-seven thousand. So this also doesn't make too much sense. Can we work on that?
Yes, sir. You know, Mayor, and, and what he's talking about for everybody, so they understand what, what that is, is that every one of the city projects has a two percent arts and public place amount on that. And what the mayor is alluding to is, is that if we have this issue within our utility department, then the money should be allocated there. Uh, you can, you can walk through that amount, I believe there's two point four million dollars within that fund right now that we could utilize, but that, just keep in mind that the, the decision from the council at the, at the time when it was initiated was to build up to help us with the, the quality of life pieces in there. However, if we have a utility that is not working, that is determined as an essential, that's the challenge that you have with trying to balance through this, this process.
Mayor, may I address Mr. Neve?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Neve, so my item specifically speaks about capital improvement projects. And I think the, uh, item that Councilmember Angel sponsored, um, with Mayor Trevino talks about these nonessential, nonessential, right? Perfect. That's what I was gonna request.
You're welcome.
Right, can we blow this up? Okay, but this is only, uh, the utilities bond, right? So obviously, we're not going to cancel anything having to do with utilities. I was speaking or referencing regular bond money that we can also utilize for utility purposes. Do we have a list of those, um, bond projects?
Do we have, uh, the general fund bonds?
That, it'd be, it'd be insane if we start canceling projects within the utilities bond. And I think you all have that discretion to move money around, right? Let's just assume...
Correct, yeah, yeah. Within the, within these bonds, as long as we're meeting the spirit of the bond documentation, that's how we can move those funds around there. And I, I believe that what the council member's talking about is that because water is important within that, you can utilize general fund monies in order to help offset the cost of the utility. It's the only, it's one of the only enterprise funds where we would ever suggest moving general fund money into that, but it's the water quality, it's public health and safety.
Can we see a list of those capital improvement projects, please?
Uh, yeah, we, uh, we would have to find them, because they're not...
Our budget officer should have them available. They were part of the council, um, meeting, we just approved them not so long ago.
Right.
Mayor, may I address?
Yes, go ahead.
So how much money do we have on the, that two per, the two percent that we, we get from every...
So every, every, every project that the city does, there's two percent of that bond that will go into this...
How much do we have?
Two point four million that is there.
So two point four million, and how much was the rebate that we're gonna use for the...
One point two.
One point two, so that should cover it?
Yes, sir. And, uh, are we gonna, we're gonna try to find it?
All right. Council, one more.
Thank you. So I think the, the, what the utilities bond projects this, uh, list provides is an indication of the money that the city is investing on utilities improvements.
That's the challenge with the, yeah, this slide is talking about exactly what we've spent from two thousand nineteen forward and, and where the, where those funds were actually spent, so...
So, um, a hundred and thirty-one million, six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars have been invested in improvements, for the most part, and on the sewer side, a hundred and forty-seven million, uh, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. If we were to, um, kind of blow up our bonds and start grabbing money to throw at the utilities department, how many projects are actually in line so that they could be turned around tomorrow and we could spend the next year working on them? Cause you said it would be nine months to a year for these projects to come to fruition in order for those improvements to actually take effect? How many projects exist now that could be started, uh, you know, as soon as we're able to grab money from a different bond? How many projects exist now that could be started, you know, as soon as we're able to grab money from a different bond?
And that's the challenge, getting a good answer for that has been the challenge because we're revolving through that conversation. We're pulling the information within there. Just really quickly on this slide, this does not include the bonds that you just approved in this year's budget as well.
Which is another 57 million?
Well, 57 million for water, but 94 million for both.
94 million, so another 100 million.
That's the money that we had dedicated. The challenge we have with that money is that is some of it's dedicated to the plants which are operating well. Our, our challenge right now is the distribution system, that's where.
So we have $100 million that are going to projects that are already ready to go or in the pipeline, ready to go. And we want to throw more money now, take away from quality of life issues, to start projects that do not have plans and are not ready to go. And that would be another, I think you said six months, three to six months delay in trying to get those projects up and running. But we're pretending like there are some plans that exist out there and we don't know if they do. This idea that we stop city business and stop looking at quality of life projects so that we can fix a problem tomorrow and not recognize that we don't have plans to do that. And it's not something that we can pancake over. When we talk about the problems in the utilities department, the major problem that came out during our discussions was the fact that there is one engineer, or we have 1.5 engineers when we were supposed to have six. And I believe we got rid of one, so we have half of an engineer now at the department. Or perhaps Mr. Pishkar is an engineer, I'm not, I'm not sure. And we know that professionals have a hard time staying in our community specifically for quality of life programs. And I think families here who send their children off to school have a hard time encouraging them to come back because of the quality of life issues that, that we lack. We just don't have the amenities that exist in other communities. So I, I just find it ironic that we're trying to even deteriorate that ability to respond to those needs more and make it harder for us to hold on to the people that we need to come into our community to fix this problem. I, I think it's short sighted. We have a plan, we have emergency plans, we're responding to the emergency. But this idea that we would stop other city business and stop improving in the quality of life for people so that we can pretend to put a Band-Aid on something when we're already, we already have $100 million in projects out there? What is the capacity of the city? How many more millions of dollars can we deal with to deal with this problem? And we've shown a commitment.
Page of order, please.
The council has shown a commitment by, and it's not popular, right? But by having a small increase in our water rates over time makes our enterprise fund that much more stable so that we can go out and get a very good bond rating and get cheaper money to fix our projects. So it's a system that is built for efficiency and for being very good stewards of the public money. And this idea to try to grab money from some other place and throw it at the problem when we don't have plans and no way to get that implemented, it just doesn't make sense. And, and I can't support this motion.
Mr. Nepp, a recess so you can get a list of the possible.
Yes, sir, we, we do know it's there because we talked about it at the, at the budget meeting and everything, so we'll just pull up the budget.
I, I have them.
Motion.
They're on the CIP.
Is it on here?
Oh, it's available.
I want to be able to pull it up here.
Okay, now all we have to do is just click on the CIP and put it right up. It'll tell you what you all approved at the budget.
Mayor, if you will, take a, take a short recess, just give us a little bit of time.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recess for 10 minutes.
You have to tell me where the CIP is on.
Back from recess, 8:25 PM.
Mayor, may I redirect?
Yes, go ahead.
Mayor, so we've received the list of adopted bond projects. And can we put on the screen for the people at home to, to see? Num, a bit conflicted because, not conflicted, but I guess rather confused. That's the wrong list I was talking about.
I'll, I'll get to it. So I wanted to share this list first, mayor and city council. This is this year's funding, this is the $94 million that is in there and where it's, where it's listed. I did want to show you that we actually have a lot of water main money in there for the distribution system already because of the, the number of main breaks that we've been having. And then this is the portion for the sewer, but you can see that the $94 million is there. On the, on the website, and you do have copies of this now, is the general obligation bond for the general fund. And I believe this matches up to what you have a copy of. I'm going to verify that really quickly, the, the order is a little bit different. So the, so the order on, on the sheet that you have handed out is the one that's listed as the adopted one. Everything is here, but it is in a little bit different order. So I just wanted to make sure when you try to correlate between the one on the screen and this one in your hand. So these are the projects that we are already, the tax afforded bonds that we have.
Mr. Nepp, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If, mayor, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
If this council were to propose any cancellation of a project from the 2024 CO and ask you to redirect that funding to water infrastructure. Council member Melissa Sigarro made a comment referencing that it may not, we may be throwing our money away by doing that because we would not have ample time to fulfill the usage of that money. If we were to give you an additional $10 million, would we be throwing our money away because you wouldn't be able to apply it to a specific water infrastructure project? Or is that statement correct? We'd be throwing money away by trying to invest in our water infrastructure?
And, and mayor and council, the, that answer comes in a two-fold process. I don't believe it is throwing money away, it'll be, we'll be able to invest in any of the projects. The challenge we have is whether or not we can actually get all of that work done. And is the, is the, is the cure better than the disease? That's the challenge we have with this as, as to do that because we are a multifaceted city. We have a lot of different needs out there, we have a lot of different services. Will moving this over into the utilities in order to advance that, will we be able to actually even move? We'll be at the mercy of how many contractors we can line up. We'll be at the mercy of how many streets can we tear up at one time where we can keep everything moving? I'm not sure what that balance is because I don't think we've ever pushed projects that hard. We, we've always been very surgical with our, with where our projects are at. So, so I, I have a hard time actually providing a definitive, is it worth it or not at this point in time? What I would hope for is that what you do is that if you determine that you want to move these over to that, because we also have bond obligations. So if we move something from the general fund bond, do we have the language within what the bond was that we just went and borrowed the money for in order to move it to the utilities too? But the idea is that we get the council to do their work and set the tone. And then we'll go back as staff and we'll reevaluate and say, all right, here's the rest of the information coming forward. If, if that makes sense exactly where.
It does.
Where I see this thing going is that I, we'll go back to our financial advisor, we'll go back to our bond council and say, can we move this? One, our bond obligations, can we do this without having a bad impact? If it has an impact, what does that impact look like? And so all the work that you're doing now is helping give the staff directive in order to go, let's go look at this thing and let's see if we can get it done in order to, to work that. We may come back to you and say, mayor, council, please don't move this one, but this one looks okay.
May I redirect, mayor?
Go ahead.
So we know that purchasing any water equipment for use of infrastructure, the turnaround time, just like a fire truck or a bus, is very lengthy, right? Would it help that you commit on the purchase of the pipes needed or whatever the case may be with the monies we move, which would commit the funding for us to be next in line to get this equipment or rather pipes needed, right, to continue moving the projects forward?
Yeah. Yeah, there, there is a lead time within any of the vehicles, the ambulances, the, the fire trucks. The lead time is up to even a year. There are some vehicles that we can't get unless we're on the queue, right? And we're, we're ready to go with those, so I don't know exactly.
Utilities is the same way, right?
Utilities is the same way.
Angie, the utilities, if we order a pipe or anything to that effect, the turnaround time is lengthy. How long do we usually take to get a, whatever it is that we order or?
Well, it just depends because sometimes when we contract.
An average? Six months, a year?
I think it's, it's actually getting better now, but I'm not, I don't want to give you a timeframe because I'm not exactly sure.
But it's taken months.
It does.
Let's just say months, whether it's six months, three months, 12 months, 18 months, it's months, right?
But if we contract on a project, the contractor gets the pipe himself, we don't buy the pipe, they buy the pipe. Because that's part of the, of the package.
Of the scope.
Yes.
Okay.
We buy the pipe for the ones that we replace ourselves in-house.
I'm just, I have an issue with what I hear because during budget, we heard from some of my colleagues saying, let's, you know, what can we do to stop the Buena Vista baseball sports complex? Let's redirect money elsewhere, right? So that we can use it for water infrastructure, we've heard in the past, or whatever the case may be. And now it sounds like we are gung ho, let's focus on quality of life, right? I, I've used this example over and over in interviews, right? You have a budget to build a home. And you start with your plumbing, your electrical and a roof, right? To make sure you have a good home that you're going to live in. And then you start getting excited about your new house. And you start buying furniture and you tap into the plumbing's budget. And then you start buying, you know, these nice appliances, now you tap into the electrical. And then here comes the end of the project and you have no more money to address the plumbing issues, the electrical issues, or the roofing issues in order to have a good, sound home to live in. And we're in that situation right now, right? We have issues with infrastructure. I don't understand how I could hear an elected official after the water boil say, but it's okay, there's enough money to address those issues, let's just continue. I mean, we got criticized, I think someone on this council said, business as usual. Now we're, we're starting to hear from the critics, no, it's fine, business as usual, there's enough money there. Let's just continue with our projects, whether it's, you know, playgrounds, whether it's the arts fund or plaza improvements, or even city council priority funding. All of a sudden, it's okay, right? Because there must be some personal, you know, button that got pushed. And it's like now, right, there is some sort of push to eliminate projects that are essential. And Mr. Manager, by no means am I putting you on the spot, but can you put this on the screen, please? In this particular order. So what the city manager is going to put on the screen is apparently a group message that was shared with the MVDA wall group where some council members are a part of. And we were called apparently that this exercise today was simply, and I'll wait for staff to put that on the screen.
Mayor, may we have a point of order? Mr. Nguyen, can you review this to see, it's a chat group? And it seems as if it's been used, using, it's been used as a cudgel and as some proof of something when it's a chat group.
It becomes public record for an elected official as part of the, of the communication.
This is, it's not a court of law, so it's not like evidence has to be excluded, so if it's related to the item.
And your name doesn't appear, but I'm sure you're part of the group. So we had this exchange, right, where they shared the agenda of us looking at these projects by an executive director of a nonprofit we work with. And it reads, I don't know if you have seen this, there is no list that he put forth, assuming the mayor or me, because I also put the item. But it is very likely to include the binational park and Sarkata Creek ORLP project and anything river related to. All projects are on the table. Retribution, we've heard some of our colleagues use that word a lot up here. This is how they plan to do payback with us. Fixing our water infrastructure is not payback to anybody. If anything, I would hope that RISC would be up here advocating that we invest more in our water infrastructure. This is by no means payback in any way, shape, or form. But yet they want an $800 million bond with water parks. The $800 million bond for whoever, well, no, we know who wrote it, was to fix the water. It wasn't for water parks, it was specifically for water infrastructure, that number got corrected, I think it came down to 500 million. We will need to mobilize. We will need to mobilize and have people there at the council meeting on Monday. Are any of you all, I'm assuming, available to jump on a Zoom call tomorrow, Sunday afternoon, which was yesterday? We will need to have people there at the council meeting. There are several key issues that are being brought up, but all tied to a political root, it's not politics, political root that doesn't support any of the projects that we do support and want to make Laredo thrive in a sustainable, community-centered way. I think that we all want our community to thrive. And the mere fact that we're discussing what could we do to contribute to water infrastructure does not have us deviate from wanting our community to thrive. I find this very concerning because we are trying to work together through this emergency. And it's still an emergency because although we have clean water, we need to address it for it not to happen again. And unfortunately, the odds are it's going to happen again. If I had to guess, right? And for a message of politics and retribution to be put out there is simply not the intent or the idea. And I say this because we had individuals come up and really accuse us of, oh, it's politics, this is not politics. We're honestly trying to fix our water, whether we do away with this priority funding, whether we do whatever we need to, to put it in our water infrastructure projects. I just wanted to put this out there because those are the conversations out there. We're doing this for political reasons, we're not. We've time after time passed resolutions on the Sarkata Creek project. We have all supported the binational project. I don't know of a single council member up here that has said, we don't support it. We've passed numerous resolutions. I think the mayor has been at the forefront of the binational project as much as Murphy's Science used to be in front of. But there comes a time where we prioritize what we focus on. And maybe if we unfund something today, it doesn't mean we don't believe in it. It means we put it aside and we bring it back next year. But right now, the priority is water infrastructure. And for us to say that we have enough money in the water fund right now to address a potential problem that's going to range between $500 million and $800 million is nonsense. Now, there's some misconception out there too that I think is being put out there. There may be not enough time for us to use this bond money, and you can take it off the screen, Mr. Nepp, thank you, to spend whatever we allocate into the utilities fund in time before the bonds expire or we enter any sort of arbitration. That's not the case, we have so many years to use this bond money. I still see on my district allocation, bond money from 2014, if I'm not mistaken, and we're still using those bond funds 10 years later. So if this council makes a commitment about prioritizing our water infrastructure and focus on the needs rather than the wants, we'll meet and get to that $500 million amount that we are trying to reach, right? And which will probably be $800 million by the time we, we reach everything that needs to be done. Additionally, I think that this council should consider, the same way we did in the past, of funding the arts by 2%. That in every bond, until we fix the water issue, the water infrastructure problem, that we dedicate at minimum 10% of bond money for water infrastructure. Because all these economic development projects that we see on the adopted bond issue list, whether it's the relocation of an economic development building, the 311 building, the Buena Vista Fire Station, the Bruni Plaza improvements, the Springfield Avenue Extension Phase 1 BIG project, the tourist projects, which we all supported, the health building assessment, the secondary site for the public safety radio system. All of them are buildings, right? They're all projects that need that water utilities infrastructure addressed before we start spending more money on economic development projects. And that's what I think, I don't know what needs to be cut from this list, right? And unless we engage in motions, we can go down that exercise like we do in budget. But for me, it was important that we put it out there. What we're doing today is not political. Addressing the water issue is not political. And I take offense to that, especially when there's colleagues of ours in those group text messages engaging in whatever it was that was engaged in.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I will just address one of the issues. I'm surprised that my colleague is so thin-skinned after being on council for so long and that social media becomes the guiding light for his comments.
No, it wasn't social.
But I will say. But I will say that, um, he also, I, I just wanted to clarify my statements when I was talking about spending money and that it's very difficult to spend millions of dollars for many of these projects that we may or may not decide to counsel, that we don't have a ready receptacle to receive that money and charge headfirst with some utility project that's targeted exactly to addressing this problem. So in that sense, money could be wasted. In no way did I mean to imply, um, some dismissiveness about millions of dollars, only that it is difficult to spend millions of dollars. And we are trying to do it in a very targeted way to address our water issues. And that's what the ninety-five million dollar bond that was passed just recently does. But that bond took months to develop. And the projects took months to develop. And as Ms. Cantu was, was sharing earlier, that it is, um, not just, we don't buy things for the city to use. We don't go out and buy a bunch of pipe and say, okay, now we've got good pipe and now we're just going to figure out where we need to put it in the ground. That's not how these projects work. They have, work, they have to be developed by engineers who look very carefully over our plans, determine where the best infrastructure, um, or where the worst infrastructure problems are, and then develop a plan to target them. And it is a process. So this idea that we grab funding from city plans that are already in motion and throw it at a problem is not going to get a desired effect that's going to impact our water situation. It requires a lot of planning, and especially with this boil water notice. It, we have inspectors out there, investigators out there, and they are establishing the parameters of where we need to focus. But then you have to come in and have engineers look at that and decide how to best address those issues. It's, you, you can't turn, you can't pancake this over, it's not going to happen. So rather than upend what our city projects are designed to do, which we hope is an effective way to use this money, I mean, we didn't create this bond to just be very inconsequential about how we spend taxpayer dollars. All of these projects are intended to benefit the city of Laredo and its citizens. This idea that you just upend the cart to throw money at a problem that again does, do not have plans as of yet, is ineffective. And it shows that this council doesn't have a big strategic plan or a long-term vision for how we improve the quality of life for our citizens. That's why this idea that we just bite and bite and bite down on these, these bonds and look at them as if, well, where can we grab a little bit of money here and a little bit of money there? These are projects that are strategic. And we lose something as a city if we're just going around and trying to undo what was already decided months ago of how we proceed forward. The only thing on this list that I see that is not a project in and of itself is the city council priority funding. And that is all discretionary funds that we use to benefit our district. But in this case, because it's in this bond, it hasn't landed in our accounts. And that two million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is unencumbered. There are no projects in the works for that particular money. So if anything makes sense to redirect, it would be that two million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars because it's not already, it's not already been planned out, to say. Um, but I did want to clarify that. I had no me, I by no means intended to say that we're throwing away money. It's just that we don't have a place for it to go or plans for it to get used to address the problems that we're dealing with now.
Go ahead, President.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, to quote my Politics 101 professor, Dr. Anthony Nouns, uh, "Politics is the study of who gets what, when, where, and how." What we do every day is politics. That's our job, that's what this budget was, was doing. Back in August, when we passed this budget, uh, this is, and for everyone watching, this is the property tax, general fund, capital improvement plan. So we were given, we were, had a capacity of thirty million dollars, uh, to bond out for, for fiscal year 2425. These are the projects that we passed over a four-day, uh, budget workshop in August. Um, and ultimately, it was a hard set of decisions. Management gave us options and we, and we passed them. But that was in August. The, the, the water boil notice that we just had, at the end of the day, we learned, we obviously learned some things about our system. But at the end of the day, the core fundamentals are exactly the same now as they were two months ago when we passed this budget. Uh, we've known, all of us who ran in '22, we, we knew about the water boil notice in February of '22. We knew the huge monumental task, five hundred to eight hundred million dollars of water infrastructure. That's, that's not news to anyone. This water boil notice did not, uh, create that news for us. We, we did know that. And I'm definitely not saying we're doing enough. We're absolutely not doing enough, there's so much more we need to be doing. Uh, but what ultimate, and then the other page that was up there was our utility bond. So for everyone, the only way we can bond out money for utilities projects, water and sewer, the only way we get a bonding capacity for that is through our water rates. So this past year, this, that we just passed the ninety-four million dollars for water and sewer, that was almost our maximum. Interestingly, and Ms. Cantu can attest to this, our maximum bond capacity was a hundred million, but we only bonded ninety-four million. And then we rolled over, uh, forty million from past bonds to get to a total of a hundred and thirty-six million. So the actual total utility capital improvement plan that we just passed for fiscal 2425 was a hundred and thirty-six million, not the ninety-four. The ninety-four million is the new money that we bonded, but we rolled over forty. So in total, we, we did put one hundred and thirty-six million toward, is that enough? No, should we be doing more to find out what else we can do? Yes, we have a bond referendum committee that we've established. And that's based on property taxes, um, and people, the people will vote on that in May, assuming this council chooses to pursue this, which I think a lot of our department heads, including our police and fire chiefs, hope that we do. Um, if we, and with this next council that gets elected and starts in January of 2025, will have the task of hearing from, uh, the bond referendum committee in February of '25 to go on the election in May of '25, a, a series of propositions. In the original plans, I don't think water infrastructure was thought to be included in a bond referendum on, based on property taxes. But I have good information that says several other cities in Texas do use these types of bonding, uh, through property taxes, including Paris, Texas, Wichita Falls, Texas, Perrylin, Texas, and, uh, Flugerville, Texas. So, you know, and, and my, my understanding is the Bond Enhancement Services Subcommittee has already started rethinking their section of the bond referendum committee and going to recommend approximately a hundred and eighty million dollars to go towards that aging infrastructure. So this council will have a chance, uh, including the new ones that are elected in, 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 in the next two weeks, to, to invest significant amount of money and put it to the people. Because there's a lot of talk up here, what do we value, in quality of life versus, um, versus, uh, how do we balance it out? Keeping our quality of life, but also keeping up with this aging infrastructure that we all know has been decades in the making, that we are now tasked to deal with. And that's, and we're, we're up to it. But we, we might have to make a decision come in February of this coming year with, with the bond referendum committee. To what extent are we going to ask the voters to, um, help us fund a little bit more, uh, through, through the, through the bond? Versus raising water rates? And who wants to do that? Not many people. But if we put it to the people in May of '25 for them to decide how much we're willing to invest in our water infrastructure, that's something Laredo's never done before. And I hope, you know, we can also remember that we do have that chance coming up. And that also gives staff time to prepare, uh, for that plan. I'm just throwing it out there, this is not easy. I just hope we're all, you know, thinking about it with those, you know, facts in mind.
All right, things Cortez wants to direct us. All right, go ahead, Mr. Cortez.
Yes, uh, thank you. Uh, since you did bring up my name in a, a message with a WhatsApp group, this sentiment is shared by a lot of people in this community. And until you start having transparency and openness and go beyond a small little group making decisions like this for the city on issues like this, you are going to have this type of reaction and response. And so, um, this weekend also, after, what, what also came out is that since there are some of you that are close to certain social media groups that started putting out petitions, um, and things like that, and it's already come up at other city council meetings here about certain projects related to the binational riverfront project and the ORLAP grant and Sarkata Creek. Um, because there's no transparency or openness or a list of projects or how you came to this group of projects, what community members did you invite or bring into that conversation? It starts to create this kind of, um, a lot of assumptions and uncertainty that starts to come about through the community. And because we're often blindsided by the way that the business is done without involving people in the community, you're going to have responses like that. And it's in a series of actions that you have taken here that lead so many people in the community to feel this way. So, um, what I want to say is this is going to continue until the process changes and there's more openness and transparency and you make a true commitment to bring in people from the community and people from the neighborhoods in order to make your decisions about what you are defining as essential versus non-essential. Thank you.
Thank you for your personal opinion, Ms. Cortez. But you've played the game, like you said, because you've lobbied for the organization that you represent. And you've also had that personal and, um, circle of elected officials that have at times included both Councilmember Cigarroas, at a certain point, Councilmember Bettis, and not all of us, and have worked alongside you on different projects. And I truly value the work that you do with your organization, but it's worked both ways. And, and you know that because you've also engaged in that type of politics, like Dr. King mentioned. But thank you for expressing your opinion. And this was not directed at you, but rather in general, that we're not trying to do politics, right? And it's not payback for anything that we take action today, but rather a focus on our water infrastructure. Mayor, I did want to also speak about how I can't understand how, I hear now my colleagues say that we shouldn't undo projects that we voted on when time after time, I've heard, let's undo the sports complex. If it was already approved, why do we continue to talk about undoing other projects? But now, let's focus about not undoing anything. Let's, business as usual, something that apparently you all have not agreed with in the past, but now conveniently, it's business as usual, it's okay. In the middle of an emergency, not only declared by the mayor, but by the governor of the state. And that is why I put this item on the agenda. I really think there needs to be a commitment by this council. If we've tasked a bond subcommittee to review water infrastructure priorities, then this council needs to start prioritizing those as well when it comes to general fund monies. The people at home and the people here need to understand that this bond list that you just saw is taxpayer dollars on the loan. This is a forty-two point nine million dollar credit card bill that this city has. A forty-two point nine million dollar credit card bill that we have to pay back, plus interest. And if you use your credit card for wants rather than needs to pay interest on it, then we need some financial lessons here. But if we're bonding, let's bond for the needs and not the wants. I'm prepared today to go through the list and propose any cuts to reda, from general fund, redirect them to water infrastructure projects. Let's let our, um, consultant who has done this over and over, over another city say, you know what? Now I have this additional pocket of money, whether it's five million, ten million. Let him and our city manager say, city council, thank you very much, but we don't need it. Maybe we'll need it in 10 years because we have enough. But have this council prioritize today that we're committed to putting the needs before the wants. And that's the reason why I placed this item on the agenda. All right, go ahead, Congressman.
Thank you. Um, so I don't disagree with what, what you're saying. But again, where were you a year ago? Where were you two years ago? Or three, when we, when there has been, when, when this discussion has been brought up in terms of discretionary funds and how they're being used and sticking to a plan and sticking to goals and, yet you two spent, well, d, d, monies were spent not only from discretionary funds, but community development funds on a one million dollar, um, splash pad for a park. Discretionary funds were just celebrated for opening up a seven hundred and thirteen thousand basketball park just in August. These, this, this prob, I, I definitely agree moving forward that discretionary funds, bond monies, need to stick to a budget, need to stick to a plan. We keep trying to have this revolving conversation that just doesn't, that we cannot marry when the decision comes down to it. And gr, making these emergency rush decisions because there's a crisis now and there want, there's a savior, there's, there, there, people want to be the savior, is really dis, just disappointing. And monies being allocated is not the problem. It's the boots on the ground as city management and hiring and a qualified director to make all projects get completed. There are, why, why, why not wait for an assessment from our, our new interim director to, for us to actually understand what we're working with and dealing with?
All right. All right, go ahead.
Thank you. I hate to be put in the middle of this, but it needs to be done, that's our job. This is difficult, but we know what our needs are. This is exactly what the problem has been with council for the past twenty-five to thirty years. We keep kicking the can down the line, over and over and over. We have aging infrastructure lines, we all know this. This is not going to stop. I don't need a professional to come and tell me that we have lines that are twenty years past its time. We know how many hundreds of miles of lines we need to replace. And if we don't set money aside now, it's never going to happen. I don't want to be the council that just, oh, kicked it down the line again. I don't want to sit here another four years, if you all should vote me in again, and just say, hey, he just kicked it down the line again. We need to concentrate on that. There's no two ways about it. Without water, city doesn't exist. Without water to your homes, the city doesn't exist. You will leave. And yes, our children may leave, but at the end of the day, we need to make sure that the people that are here are taken care of. And that's the important part. We can't continue just spending and spending and spending. And my colleague is right, why now? Because the time is now, the emergency is now, it's happening now. I don't want to wait for another three, four, five months, hey, we need forty million dollars and we have the opportunity to set it in place now. I don't want to continue just moving this over and over. And the next council say, hey, it was the previous council's fault because there was no money set aside for this. We know the infrastructure we need, you all know the infrastructure we need. Priorities are important. We can't continue just having our little pet projects done. We have the need now. This council needs to be the one that moves it and makes it happen. In my district alone, the base area, Del Mar Sea, those homes were built in the sixties. Those lines are already over fifty years old, so those are problems we're going to have in those areas now, very soon. Those lines are already over fifty years old and that's their lifespan, fifty years. They're already sixty years old, seventy years old. There are things we need to invest in now. My comments.
Mayor, I just, I, I, thank you. Um, this happened on our watch. We are responsible for this boil water notice. We did kick the can down the road. We were irresponsible with how monies were spent. And yet now, now, w, we want to make rush decisions to, again, just pretend like we're doing something? Not once has anybody scrutinized the, what, and, uh, some of the contracts that have come forward in the past or understood if we were actually receiving all of the deliverals that we, that, that, from, um, the companies that we hired. Where, and, yes, this, and, and just in, in to response from Councilmember Torres, you keep saying that there's no retaliation and retribution. Well, I'm sorry, but all of this is, is also a distraction towards, here you, you're taking it out on the arts where, when you know that I- taking it out on the arts where, when you know that I am an avid supporter of the arts and the, and is it because that I'm being outspoken and raising awareness on the fact that council um, voted themselves a immediate raise?
Yes, go ahead.
So I understand that this, and then I agree with, with Councilwoman Cigarroa and appreciate it for, for all the work you have been doing. And you're right. Sometimes I've been here for eight months and, and I've heard that you guys, this has been done in your watch. But this is the first time I've been through it. I've been elected, I got elected twenty-twenty-two, you know, went through what I went through, and these eight months. So this is the first time I'm addressing this. So I, I hope and I wish that this will be the last time I have to address this. So if there's any way we can help utilities funds from moving monies from, from other places to, for utilities, I want to be a part of it. Because I want to be the person that we want, want to be by a, a group of persons that are going to take charge of this situation right now. Yes, this is my first time of, of going through this, of this uh, water boil. You know, so right now, if, if I'm, I want to be but part of the council that says, you know what, we did something different. So that's my opinion. This is what, you know, that's why I want to support this.
Yes, go ahead. I just respectfully want to remind everyone that all nine of us were up here in August and nothing has fundamentally changed. We had the water bowl notice, but that didn't change the facts underneath our feet. So I don't understand why this urgency wasn't there in August, wasn't there the previous August when we have our budget time. I just, I don't understand why we're being so reactive when we should be proactive, okay? I, I'm, I mean, if we're, are we, are we really going to just go line by line and nix millions of dollars of projects without even consulting with management and the directors about how that will affect, affect them and whether or not they think that's appropriate? I just, I know we have that power on council, but do we want to really abuse it that way? I, I, I'm concerned that, I mean, not to mention the four days that we went through budget back in August and we're just going to throw it all away in thirty minutes uh, here at this meeting tonight. I, I, just because we're deciding to be reactive to the water bowl notice instead of planning in advance. Um, you know, all, nothing fundamentally changed because of the water bowl notice. The facts were the facts. We knew when we made this budget about the water pipes. Nothing, we didn't learn that, we didn't all of a sudden learn that we had fifty-year-old pipes. Um, so I'm failing to understand why we would do something that our management is not even recommending we do. Our, our, the experts, the directors, no one's recommending this. This is just a few council members deciding it, which we have the power to do, but is it appropriate? And, you know, I, I'd be, I'd caution us, please, you know, to just consider at least getting recommendation from management and directors before we just go down line by line and cut thirty million dollars that we all spent four days working on, you know, back in August. So I, I'm, I just, I really think this is a, a, in, not a wise way to go about this and, and potentially disingenuous.
All right.
Um, I just, I, I just want to correct the record. You've heard that there are, uh, that we need money because nothing's being done. We have, as I believe Councilmember King pointed out, a hundred-and-thirty-six million dollars that are being dedicated right now to water utility projects. And it was suggested that the bond committee has recently passed or is considering a hundred-and-eighty million as a proposal for spring. So you add that together, and my math will be terrible on the fly, but that's three-hundred-and-fifteen million dollars of spending that we will do. How much should we spend right now? I mean, as Councilmember Torres pointed out, it's credit card. Do you spend it all, do you pile it on the credit card right now, even if it's just money that sits there and, and needs to be spent down as these projects develop? We have a hundred-and-thirty-six million dollars in projects in the chute right now. We're looking at another hundred-and-eighty million dollars in spring, which will give us time to develop out those projects. So attacking this thirty-million-dollar bond is just, it doesn't seem proportionate to what is already occurring. We are doing something right now because our utilities department took it upon themselves to plan out how we proceed to address the aging water infrastructure. This crisis was an emergency. The city has responded and you heard about the response from management, all the inspectors they put out there, they got help from around the state. And we now have an expert in Mr. Pishkar, who is looking at the system to see where more effective improvements can be made. But to suggest that this council has not put forth money and a plan to address it is not true. Thank you.
Anybody else? So Mayor, I do want to make propositions um, for proposed, I'm assuming um, redirection of funds, have staff reevaluate what they could use that funding for. And if it's something that they feel that is not needed for the water infrastructure, then have them tell us. But let's show um, that we're being, whether it's reactive or proactive uh, to the situation at hand, that we're committed to fixing this problem, especially with funding from the general fund bond. And we put it out there as a proposal. Maybe between now and the next meeting, you all tell us and um, our consultant can say, yes, we could use this money, no, we can't. Let's send it back to general fund and so be it. But I think there has to be some sort of commitment from this council. So I'd like to propose that we put a stop on the relocation of the economic development and three-one-one building and allocate those two-point-two million dollars for potential water infrastructure projects.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One, two, three. It's at four.
Four opposed.
Four opposed, four in favor?
Yes.
What, discussion?
Is the economic development director here in three-one-one?
Yeah, the economic development director is here. And, and she is actually the responsible one for this, this relocation, so she'll be able to answer your questions.
Good evening, Miriam Castillo, Director for Economic Development Department.
Good evening, Mayor, and thank you for being here. Um, in your expertise and within twenty, this fiscal year, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, can you explain to us uh, the importance of, of uh, this, this amount of money for the relocation of you and uh, your department in three-one-one as per instead of uh, funding our water prices?
Absolutely. I don't think I'll be in the position of really determining which one is more important than other. Um, we all know that um, water, it's important just for economic development itself and for quality of life. I can speak for the need of the department um, and how city manager's office, it has been the intention and you all have a quote as well. The growth and development of the department, we haven't been able to fill positions that are needed for the department to continue addressing the economic growth and needs and programs in all different areas, not only industrial, but commercial and downtown and all the different programs for small businesses. Um, if you haven't visited our offices, there are small offices. We have, we have outgrown the space. Um, this, um, I guess initiative of relocating the department to El Portal has been in the talk since I started a year and a half ago as the director for the department. Um, it is definitely, you know, um, I think um, there is a lot of potential in the department to fulfill the needs that council has and expectations from it, as well as the community. Um, I do know that um, um, the engineering department has done an outstanding job trying to really keep it at a, at a level that, um, you know, based on the needs. The new plans do in, um, include an incubator, a very small incubator for small businesses. The incubator that we have currently through other um, partnerships with other organizations, it is my opinion that we have also outgrown it. Laredo is no longer the small city that it used to be before. We think that there's need for it as well. Um, and that's um, what I can share with you in a very nutshell. Um, there are positions that we haven't been able to fill because we just don't have space. We have um, almost six staff members in a nine-hundred-square-feet, you know, space.
And what are the, 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 the job titles to those positions?
We have a business development coordinator, um, a business development um, specialist as well. And those two, those are the ones that um, we have pretty much, we have had them open for at least a year.
And you believe, do you believe these, you would need the complete two-point-two?
According to the quotes and the um, project um, projections that we were given by our engineering department, that's how much is needed now. That's for both, for economic development and the three-one-one. And if I can pull out, I guess, the rendering, just to give you an idea on the space.
Yes, go ahead.
Just to add a little bit.
Sure.
Uh, Mayor, Convention and Visitor Bureau downstairs. When I, that's how it came up because I remember going over there. Convention and Visor, Visitor Bureau office right now has a lot of space. Is there, there should be a way that we can fit you all in there. And if you need an incubator for right now, can we use mile one, which is fairly close by? Just until, you know, we progress towards this? But there's enough space, I think, in the Convention and Visitor Bureau office that exists right now. Maybe sharing some offices, sharing some of the cubicles. And they do have a lot of space in the downstairs. They want to put you all in the upstairs and build it all out, but there's room right now. That's my suggestion there.
Mayor, may I reiterate? Go ahead. So again, this is a list of potentials and we'll have management, like you mentioned. Obviously, you're going to advocate for your department, but you made a very good point. Economic development, you need water, right? So if we were to unfund this based on the city manager's follow-up recommendation, doesn't mean that we completely cancel it. It means that maybe we bond out for it next year, right? We prioritize what we need now, water or a building, right? And that is why I'm putting this motion forward. What we fought on today is not set on stone. I'm sure the city manager will get together with his team and managers will come back with a recommendation based on what we're recommending tonight. Go ahead.
Do you have a, a total of these important positions that, that you want to fill?
A total as far as um,
The funding for the fiscal year?
I don't have the number with me, but I can provide a report.
Boy, if you can uh, add an amendment to the motion and, and make sure we fund those important positions to the city as she's saying.
But they're not part of capital improvement?
Those are funded. The positions have been funded. We haven't been able to fill them because we just don't have enough space. And the option of um, using some of the CBB space um, has been contemplated. We have talked to the director as well. Um, unfortunately, I don't think that the setup that they have right now may um, fulfill all of the economic development team, but it's something that we can definitely, um, I guess, continue the conversation.
Go ahead.
Um, do you think you could estimate the loss to the city in stalling economic development plans from not being able to hire these six positions for an entire year as we wait for a new round of, of bonds to be able to give you the space that you need? Like the, what will the negative impact be to the city in its economic development department and our growth planning if you can't get those six positions filled? Because we have decided here that our economic growth is somehow compromised because we can't bond out the two-point-two million dollars, but somehow the hundred-and-thirty-six million dollars that we are, have already bonded out and has already been planned for projects that address the water infrastructure, that is not enough and it needs the two-point-two million of this economic development department.
Mayor, Mayor and City Council, I, I do want to return to what Councilmember Torres said. The way he's tried to explain it, and I'm going to explain it as well too, from, from his position. Please correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember. But the, the intent of this exercise is to establish the project that you believe we might want to look at it, removing out in order to move over to the water. He has left me with the ability to go back to every one of my, my directors that are impacted, impacted by this and say, "Council members, we want to give you, we want to give you the rest of the story now." And we want to show you that. So Councilmember Cigarroa, that your question would, would be answered within that. When we come back, here's the po, here's the process, here's what's going to happen if we, if we stop this project. Here's what we believe the, the impact is for that. Don't get too far ahead of us. What I'm actually asking is, is that tell me which ones you really want us to get into and, and look very, very closely at, and we will present back to you. There, there's a cause and effect with everything that we do. And there's a cause and effect if we don't focus on water the way we're supposed to. There's a cause and effect on all these different things. But, but, and I, I just want to make sure that I, I reiterate what Councilmember Torres has said. You're going to give me this list of projects and we're going to go back and we're going to say, "Oh, my goodness, ca, city council, I don't think this one, this one really needs to remain for the reasons of why we're going to explain that."
Mr. Mayor.
And that, that's my understanding of what that directive was.
Mr. Neff, sorry, sorry to interrupt. Uh, I'd like to ask, ask my colleague, Albert Torres, if you'd rescind that motion to have an opportunity for staff to come back to us, maybe poll us and what we think we may be able to pull out or delete or maybe even cut a little bit from and see what your recommendations would be because you can talk to your staff. Now, because what they need is important as well, obviously. But with your recommendations, speaking to all of us on an individual basis, then you'd have more of an idea where we all stand. And I think that's a great idea to, to be able to come back to us and then let us know. I think you've spoken to us and, of course, your directors to let us know um, what, what the recommendations are.
You're okay with that?
If you'd be okay with that.
Mayor, do you agree?
Yes, go ahead.
So I'll withdraw my motion and I'll make a motion to table um, items one-fifteen, um, V-one and um, one, I'm sorry, and from supplemental to A, two, to have staff bring back recommendations um, to the next meeting and consult with um, council to see what we feel are priorities and table it for the rest of the meeting.
Motion second. Are you discussing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Yeah, and Mayor and City Council, what we will do, we will ask all of you to give it, give me your list of what you want to do. I do want to make sure that you understand, we were getting ready to award a contract for the three-one-one and economic development. It is item fifty-four on your agenda. Fifty-six, all right, I'm sorry. Uh, please table that one as well too, so that when we bring back the information, we, according to engineering, we have time, we'll bring back, we'll bring back this list.
Motion table fifty-six.
Yeah, yeah. Just table fifty-six.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Mayor, the next item that was brought up with this um, was another item put on the agenda, should be brief. Discussion with possible action to petition the state of Texas through Governor Abbott's emergency declaration for funding for Laredo's water infrastructure from the Texas Water Fund administered by the Texas Water Development Board to finance water projects in the state and any other matters incident there too. So if voters recall, um, at the last general election, um, we had a proposition that um, the legislator put out there, the legislature put out there of asking voters to create the Texas Water Fund. And the voters voted yes. The state put one billion dollars in that fund created by the voters. And I don't doubt that staff is out there soliciting funding, but I think it's important that we have staff directed to, through management, that we utilize the governor's emergency declaration as a tool to ask the Water Development Board for funding. I know we've applied in the past and we haven't been successful at acquiring funding from the Water Development Board, but I think that um, through the mayor's advocacy, we were able to acquire such tool through the governor's office that it's time that we put it to use. Um, I don't think any other city has received a declaration, and I may be wrong with my statement um, as it pertains to water infrastructure, but, but what better argument um, could we not make to the Water Development Board if we utilize the highest-ranking elected official's resolution of an emergency to petition funding from that one-billion-dollar project? So my motion is to have management and staff um, petition the Water Development Board utilizing the governor's emergency declaration um, to seek funding from the Texas Water Fund.
A second for discussion, Mayor, man.
Yes, before we go into that, uh, as a matter of fact, I did get a call from Governor Abbott saying that he would help us in any way possible because of the importance of the city to the state. This is the largest port of entry in the United States. We can't have our city paralyzed and I think he sees that. So I think it would behoove us to, to ask for those, for that help and those funds and think he'll, he'll be on board. So I think it's a good move. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so Chairwoman Brooke Pop of the Texas Water Development Board came and spent some time here at our, um, in our city and met with management and I believe it was uh, myself, Councilmember King and, and Councilmember Lisa Cigarroa who joined the meeting with her. And she did express, um, one, she was very positive about the utilities department, how One, she was very positive about the utilities department, how they have structured rates. Because rates are a sign of health for a water department. And it's important when you're looking at funding and opportunities for that. And she did discuss with the previous director, but also with Ms. Cantu. Some propositions for funding and how that might move forward. So I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Ms. Cantu, but can you talk a little bit about? What was discussed with Chairwoman Pop and and what considerations you have when looking at projects? That would meet the standards for the Texas Water Development Board Fund?
Okay, good afternoon, Angie Cantu, for the record. Our meeting with her was to discuss some of the projects that we currently have in place and all the things that we've done with Water Development Board. We have always utilized Water Development Board for a lot of our projects. We've done. Over two hundred million dollars with the Water Development Board. I've done those applications myself, so that's why I know. The latest project was the Manadas for fifty-two million. We've also done the Jefferson, thirty-five million, the South Laredo. Patrovientos, the booster stations, elevated storage snack by United High School. So we've done a lot of projects with Water Development Board. When we do seek funding from Water Development Board, it is specifically for projects that are. We try to utilize like a water plant, the sewer plant, because they have some extra requirements in there. That make sometimes the the cost of the projects be a little bit, or the project cost be a little bit higher than normal. Because it does have Davis Bacon, it does require American iron and steel, it has certain requirements. But we are, we do go out and seek funding from Water Development Board, but when we do, it it also. Hits our debt capacity because in the past, those used to be junior liens or subordinate liens, what we used to call them back then. They now want a first lien. So if we decide that we're going to do a project. It's still going to hit the bond capacity that we have. And so right now. We can look at projects that we currently have in the pipes to determine which projects would be best suited for Water Development Board. But sometimes the limitations with that type of funding is that it is married to that one project only. And so when we bond out in the open market and we get like right now, the fifty-seven million that we're going to do for water. If I have a project and I have surplus funds. Well, then it could be reallocated to another project. And that does not happen when we seek out funding through Water Development Board.
So I would like to make an amendment, but the person who made the initial motion is no longer here. I imagine she'll be coming back. So that we can, can I go ahead and make the amendment?
Remember, you can make an amendment, you get a second, then you vote on.
Okay, then, so I I would like the amendment to be while we're considering. Projects for Texas Water Development Board submission. That we consider the impact to our a a bond capacity. And we want to make sure that we don't negatively affect any of that bond capacity. So that we can be strategic about how we ask for monies for these additional projects. To the one hundred and thirty-six million that we've already bonded out. So I imagine if the bonds have just gone out, then we earn less. We have less flexibility to search out for more funding. So I just want us to be aware of what those limitations or restrictions might be. And consider that when we're looking at projects for the Texas Water Development Board.
If it's a grant, perfect. But I think the last time we got a grant was the Arrow Funds, which was a forty-eight million dollar. Everything else has been a loan with maybe minimal interest rates, which are great. But it does count as a loan, I either way. Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, and just, I was going to mention that that there's Texas Water Development Board grants and it's loans and. In the past, we got a lot of loans, not a lot of the grants, but with this new billion dollars, that's nice. But that she also said that Texas has an eighty billion dollar need for the whole state and we just got one billion. And most of that billion's already been allocated to the major cities and we're going to be, you know, fighting for the crumbs. But look, I agree with the motion that we should be by using this opportunity. This unfortunate situation to advocate better for, you know.
And we can certainly submit a PIP, which is the Project Information Form to them. When those get submitted, then if it gets approved, then you get invited to apply. I cannot just go and tell Water Development Board, I'd like to have this money. No, you have to be invited to apply. And so they, it's based on the project information form that is submitted.
Right, and and I think, Mayor, if I may redirect, you know, the primary intention is for us to maybe apply for the water line replacement program. So that we can offset the bonds that we've bonded out for and relocate them within our utility and infrastructure bond, right? So we can also do that. I think that Councilmember King is is correct when he says we're competing with San Antonio, Dallas, Fort Worth, Houston, El Paso. But what the mayor has pointed out and the reason why we got the emergency declaration from the governor is because of our geographic location. And the role we play as the number one port, right? And we can't lose our side on that attention that the governor has brought to the city because of this unfortunate. Event from just, you know, putting it in a file and say, oh, well, the mayor gave, the governor gave us an emergency declaration. I think, and I want to say, we're the only city that has got an emergency declaration due to water infrastructure. And I think we need to put that to play in order to ensure that we get some sort of funding. We can use every single dollar that we can get from any entity. There's a motion, second.
Motion, second.
And I did have an amendment out there, but it does need to be seconded.
I stepped out to the restroom. Can I hear your amendment again?
Yes, the the amendment was to make sure that the considerations that Texas Water Development Board has. The the impact that they have to our bonding capacity for any grants or loans that they might propose. Is considered when we're looking at what projects we would file with them. Yes, Ms. Cantu was explaining that every Texas Water Development Board grant or our loan can impact our bonding capacity. And we want to be mindful of that because we've just gone out for this ninety-four million dollars. And so financially, we need to be aware of that.
Mayor, I mean.
Yes, go ahead.
I think the motion was related to the grant money, which would, the one billion dollar grant funds any other grant. So I don't think it would apply to the the bonding concern.
If it grants, it doesn't, I'm not saying let's go out for loans. I'm saying let's get whatever free money's out there from that one billion dollars.
All right, so you have a motion?
Yes, sir, and a second by Councilmember Melinda Segaro.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. And I'd like to bring item number nine. There's some people waiting from out of town. Public hearing and introductory ordinance amending zoning ordinance map. City of Laredo by authorizing issuance of conditional use permit for trucking company.
Point of order, we just need to make a motion to open public hearing number nine before it's read into the record. So motion to open public hearing number nine.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you want me to read public hearing number nine?
Yes.
Yes, nine.
Public hearing number nine, public hearing introductory ordinance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo. By authorizing the issuance of a conditional use permit for a trucking company on Lot Three. Block one Conseco subdivision, unit three, lot one, block one Gambit Platte and approximately eleven point two acres. As further described by meets and bounds and attached exhibit A located at five four one two Santa Maria Avenue. Forty-nine twenty-five Tesoro Plaza Drive and thirteen eighteen West Colton Road. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the proposed conditional use permit amendment and staff supports the application.
Yes. Burns, it's in District Seven, it's right there.
Mayor, point of order, we need to ask if there's anyone speaking here for or against, and then we'll.
Yeah, let's go for against. For against? For against? For against.
And there's the opportunity, the lady that's here can come up and speak on the item.
Uh, Nicola Taylor.
Can you tell us what your opinion is on this?
Oh, for it, obviously. We're the, like, property owners.
Mayor, can I?
Yes, go ahead.
So this is the the lot where the old Bingo was, right there across from Sam's. And there's an apartment complex right across the street. There's a fire station. It's on Santa Maria, which I understand that the trucks are going to be, you know, entering and exiting off of there. But it is going to increase the eighteen wheeler traffic in that area. And one of the, on the schematic. It does state that there's going to be like, like a a little area where they're going to be repairing, like doing maintenance work. And I don't think that that's really appropriate across the street from a place where people live. So I'm concerned that even though it's on the Santa Maria Truck Route, it's still zone B three. And it is a trucking business. And I understand that Laredo being the number one port and everything, there is a demand for these businesses. And we see them a lot on the Mines Road. Where people are asking for zone changes so they can, you know, build these types of businesses. Sometimes it's warehousing. Sometimes it's like one of these where it's a trucking company. It's going to be a lot of eighteen wheelers. If you look at the diagram presented in the agenda, there's a lot of parking spaces. My estimate is two hundred, three hundred trailers. Is that correct?
Around there, yeah.
That's a lot of trucks. That's a lot of trailers. In that area where you've got community business, which we've got the Sam's. And you've got residential. You've got commercial shopping centers close by. And I understand Planning and Zoning approved this. But I think this is going to cause a lot of problems. And there's not going to be a good way for us to prevent eighteen wheelers parking in. The shopping centers where Coles is at overnight. You're going to start to see a lot of eighteen wheelers parked overnight. We're going to have to increase code enforcement because we're going to be dealing with even more trucks parking all over there. And we're going to get complaints because people are going to be complaining that they can't, you know. Mann Road in that area is is one lane, one lane on each way. So it's going to be very difficult for these eighteen wheelers to turn. That intersection of I thirty-five and Mann Road gets very congested. And you're talking three hundred more trucks. And my guess is that you're going to have anywhere from sixty to a hundred. Trucks moving out of that lot per day. Right?
Yep.
With the rest of them parked?
Yep.
That's a lot. And with a construction mechanic shop on there. I'm very concerned about this approval.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Mayor, so I respect my colleague's opinion. It's her district and, you know, I'll yield to her. Needs for the area, but I disagree. I think that this area has been, this building has been abandoned.
Uh, no, it is currently still in use. We have an active tenant in there and have done since twenty nineteen.
The old Gambit Bingo?
Uh, not the Gambit. I'm talking about the the cross dock that is currently there.
In the back?
The larger building on the eleven acres. I mean, the Bingo Hall is right there on that corner. I'm sorry, I'm not from Laredo. I'm not familiar with like the geographic.
Okay, so it's the Bingo Hall and you all were.
We have the Bingo Hall, we have the cross dock with the large warehouse that is currently in use and has been since twenty nineteen. And we have just purchased in the last couple of years, the old movie theater that has since been demolished. So that is also a lot that's a part of this as well.
I was also going to make reference to that building. It's, I didn't know you all owned it.
Yep.
Because there is eyesore in your district. And it's a shame, right?
It has already been demolished.
Correct. And and that's appreciated because if not, it would have been worse. So we appreciate that demolition, at least I do, because I frequent that area too, Sam's and Coles or whatever, around there. But are you all doing anything with the Gambit Bingo building?
Yes, so the Gambit Bingo Hall would be turned into a maintenance garage, as you pointed out. But it would be a privately owned and it would only be utilized for our trucks. This is not an open to the public. You can't bring your tractor trailer in and we would do maintenance. It is only for our clients who are on that property.
And don't you already have eighteen wheelers in that property?
Yes, we do.
I see them going by past by there.
It is still an active property and we've had a lease there with Central Transport since twenty nineteen.
If it, if this were my district, I personally would approve it, is my opinion, just because of the condition the Gambit Bingo Hall is in. I'm assuming you're going to do something similar with the theater.
Uh, so the, the, the theater has been demoed. We are planning on that portion of the lot would all be parking up that back section. We are planning on putting substantial investment into the cross dock and the warehouse, making it a whole lot nicer than it is right now. The same with the Bingo Hall. They will all get a serious facelift with a lot of investment being put into this site. As well as security for that. I know that there's been some eyesore. I've come down here and seen there's overgrowth, there's trash. There's been people living in there that we did not wish. And so like there's, there's things we do need to invest in and this is our plan forward.
And the interesting thing is that you mentioned parking and that maybe would spill over into the Coles, but they own that big lot.
Yep.
Where the theater used to be. So that would solve or address the parking situation. I'm assuming staff has recommended approval of this because there's similar businesses all along Tesoro and Santa Maria, right?
Good evening, Planning Staff, for the record. Yes, we've recommended in favor of it and so did Planning and Zoning Commission. It is located along two industrial collectors, Santa Maria. In the future, at some point, it will have a great separation located at that intersection. So we have in our, in our conditions. Stipulated that access along Tesoro Plaza is of course prohibited. We've also prohibited parking or idling of trucks along the northeast northeast side of the property shall, is prohibited. Again, in order to be sensitive to those residences, those residential uses to the east.
Mayor, can I?
Yes, go ahead.
I just, I understand what's what's written, like, or what's. What's like expected on paper, right? But it's hard to control. The drivers, like where they end up and we're waiting to queue in. We have that issue on Riverbank. You know, there's a lot of trucks that are waiting to queue in to get into the business at Monday morning. Before eight AM, you already have trucks parked overnight, waiting to get in the next morning. The construction, the maintenance building, is it going to be enclosed or is it going to be unopen? Exposed where they're working, but it's under like a roof instead of an enclosed building?
So it would be an enclosed building. And I believe the plan is to only have access from within our site. It would not be exiting onto Torazo Drive. It would just be like one way in and you come back out.
Okay.
And we would, we would keep the existing structure. It would be completely enclosed. Whole building would just get a facelift. There would be garage doors on the inside of our property.
I, I mean, I'm more in favor of an enclosed, you know, because we've had this come up before where they just want to put like a a roof and. So I think enclosed is good and being able to. Control the idling of the trucks, especially by the residential area. As long as we can make it work, I mean, I'm fine with it. But I do, I do want to be vocal that I feel that there are going to be concerns with this. So if anybody approves it and there's issues, I hope we all can tackle them when they come up because they will come up. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, Ms. Guerra, can you show on on the map where the residential, what residential areas exist? And where are they? Are they right up against the line of this project?
Where am I? Can't really see. This is. How do I get over here? This is Google, this is Google Earth. How do I? It doesn't want to. Yeah. Here we go. Okay, here we go. Right here. You see? Here. So this is along Tesoro Plaza. This is the northeast corner. That's why we, we did see this and we were concerned about this residential use.
No, no, this is not it. No, no.
This is it, right?
We've got to go further south.
Where am I?
They're right, they're right there.
This is Colton. This is, this is the Gambit Bingo. This is her, this is her location.
Wanted to see around the Gambit area.
Yeah, this is, this is Gambit right here. This is her location. This is the old movie theater that was demolished already. So this, right here. Is the apartments, right here. So this, we did see this when we were looking at this and we were concerned about it. You know, it is an existing use. However, we wanted to make sure that we put in a condition that idling of trucks would not be allowed. Along this northeast corridor. And we made sure that music, we put a condition regarding music to prohibit. Of course, no storage of hazardous materials. We wanted to make sure that the, you know, people out there are barbecuing or, you know, being rowdy. Mayor, I think the terms for the conditional are good. My concern was just the proximity. And the traffic and issues and also the construction maintenance work being done in the open, which you're saying it's not going to be done, so.
We can, if if you, it's up to you, but you could add a condition to make sure that that maintenance facility is within a wholly enclosed structure.
Yes, I, I, Mayor, I would like to make a motion. Yes, I I mayor, I would like to make a motion to close and introduce under the terms. That the um maintenance facility is in an enclosed structure.
Motion second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to bring up um item one fifteen A two.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion was possible? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Do you wanna come up and say something, please? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, for the record. My name is uh former county judge Danny Valdez. And I forgot what I was gonna talk about. First of all, I wanna take this opportunity to thank you and of course the city council for recognizing. Cesar Chavez. And just to give you a little history, we were here February the third. For city council to bring up this item of naming uh recognizing Cesar Chavez. And uh city council and the mayor, of course, is a mayor's item. Uh you were able to approve the naming of uh the Boulevard in the South Laredo. Uh that feeds into the sports complex. What was left pending was the um the naming of the walkway. Uh that feeds on Don Saragosa Street. Uh as far as naming it Cesar Chavez uh Walkway. And I'm glad you you took a little bit of time of recess because I met with with Nescutierrez. Uh Alicia Gutierrez from the Historical Commission. And there was a misconception that we were looking to change the name of Saragosa Street. And I think that was out there uh somehow on social media and media saying that. We're looking to change the name of Cesar uh Saragosa Street, which is not the case. We're looking at uh an overlay similar to what's there with the the former mayor, uh Mayor Aludotangelo. Uh an overlay uh into Saragosa Street. That's what we're looking looking for. Uh and I'm glad that that the council is taking this item up. I think it was mentioned the kicking uh the can down the street or down the road. And it's been happening for the last, these folks that are here. They've been uh trying to get recognition for Cesar Chavez over twenty years. And this, there was over maybe two administrations that really it fell on deaf ears. And I wanna thank the mayor, of course, for taking the lead and of course, the council members to finally recognize. Um uh Cesar Chavez. Uh an icon that a lot of young folks probably don't know who Cesar Chavez was. Uh and of course, uh you know. All the all the folks that are here and myself, we were at one time migrant workers or farm workers. When we're growing up or coming up. In fact, some of the council members, prior council members that were here. Were farm workers and migrant workers. And my brother, Lisel Valdez, former city councilman for District Five, was a farm worker like I was. Uh Blas Castañeda, former council member for District Five, was also a farm worker, a migrant worker. Councilman Fredo Verano uh was the District One, I think the District One was also a migrant worker. So. We've had folks that have sat in your chairs that were at one time or another were migrant workers. And I think it's important to to finally, and again, I I thank you all for finally recognizing. Uh who Cesar Chavez was and the contributions that he made for the farm workers. Uh when we have uh over ninety ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent of Hispanics here in Laredo. A lot of younger folks don't realize that at one time or another, your family members, your your grandfathers or fathers were migrant workers. And I remember back then, when when I when we used to go out and and into the fields. A lot of our family members brother uh would have to leave early. Uh I'm a product of the West Side. I'm a product of Cantarranos, councilmember Cigarrón. And a lot of my 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 friends and family members uh from Farias, Santa Maria. Uh had to leave early from school to go work the fields. And they would have to come back late to register for for schools, so consequently, they were disadvantaged going to school. So for us to remember what Cesar Chavez did, to be able to improve the quality of life for farm workers. By uh doing and going all out, you know, to to recognize uh the pay. The working conditions um for farm workers, you know, he took the lead for that. In fact, in I think you have um a mayor. Uh so a letter of support from State Representative Richard Raymond supporting this cause and supporting this project. You have letters of support from Loot Loot Lac. I think you have them. In fact, we have members here from Loot Lac. That support the project. So we're very happy that finally, you know, it didn't it doesn't fall on deaf ears like it has before. Uh that that we have a a council and a mayor that recognizes the efforts of Cesar Chavez. And I can I can be here all all night talking about Cesar Chavez, but I think of most of you know. Uh the contribution that Cesar Chavez made not only to he to to Webb County or or the state of Texas, to the whole country. You know, so uh I wanna thank you for that. Uh and we have members here that have been working at this, on this project for many, many years. And I think that I they would like to share some thoughts also.
Yes, thank you. And would you have a couple of comments on this item? Um Jorge Santana?
Say full word, Mayor. Wanna thank the mayor and all the city council members, all city officials. Uh we were here back in February um to present uh the projects. And um we're here today because uh when I held the first march. Um back in two thousand two. Uh we had a, we made the map, La Rio Texas made the map in all the state of Texas because we had the um. The the person that was running for governor, he was he was Tony Sanchez back then. So we had a lot of people coming from Austin, San Antonio and Corpus that helped us uh start this march. So from then on, you know, it was a big struggle, you know, going and keeping the Cesar Chavez legacy alive. Um until the twelfth March, which is back in two fifteen, twenty thousand fifteen. Uh the Cesar Chavez Memorial Line was formed. And um it became a nonprofit organization. It's a five oh one C three. We also um been involved now with the school districts, in the migrant program, educational program. And we've been honoring uh students with scholarships. And uh also work with uh the TMEU migrant program. And um it has been uh was up for a while, for a couple of years and then. This year, uh. Congresswoman Koya brought again back the uh the camp program, which is a. College migrant assist program. And I think he brought around over two million dollars for the program. And we also recognize students from TMEU on the migrant program with scholarships. Um last year, we started a new program with uh La Rio College. La Rio College uh has now the uh changed the name of vocational program. Now it's called the workforce. And then I'm working with the um air-conditioned students, uh the welding students. Carpentry and electronics. We awarded to a student last year, and most of these students were migrants. Uh this year, uh when we we um donated five thousand dollars to the college. And they managed another five thousand. So um that was two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, uh the agreement. The agreement for this year and next year, we're gonna be donating another ten thousand. So the college will match another ten thousand. So that will be twenty thousand dollars uh for the college. And now, we're gonna include also the students that are enrolled in the homeless and foster care program. This is the new agreement that we're gonna be doing. I'm I'm in the process of that with the college.
All right, thank you. Do we have Elisa Gutierrez with you?
Mayor, I think both of them wanted to speak on their concerns, but I think Judge Valdez spoke to them and they did take off because they. He explained to them what the situation was.
Mayor, they had the misconception, uh the commission, the Historical Commission had the misconception that Saragosa Street was gonna.
Yes.
Be changed, the name was gonna change. Should I talk to her? So that that intervention that you had helped a lot. All right, so I think that's uh.
Okay, do you still have the Texas Migrant Council or?
I'm sorry?
The Texas Migrant Council that used to exist?
Yes, sir.
Do you remember that one?
Yes, sir.
So I was in grade school when a lot of families went up there and they they used to come and miss school and. It was very difficult for students back then. I do remember those times, so. I do see that the importance of Cesar Chavez uh being the the leader of all those people, getting their wages uh up to date and. Their their conditions, their work conditions also, everything was done because of him.
Correct.
So he was an important person.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve your recommendation and um approve the item.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Members, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to open public hearings one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen and twenty, just in case there's anyone in the audience that needs to.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Go ahead and read these.
All right. Public hearing number one, public hearing introductory ordinance. The city council, the city of Laredo, Texas, finding that Paper Street in the city of Laredo, Texas is no longer useful or convenient to the public that. Is an unnecessary expense to the city of Laredo in closing, vacating and abandoning that Paper Street being at zero point three two acre tract land out of. Sixteen hundred block of Urban Avenue right of way situated in District Two, the Eastern Division, City of Laredo, Webb County, Texas, and providing for a reversion of. Fee in said Paper Street to the underlying property owners, but reserving a perpetual utility easement. Hereof closed as a public easement and providing for an effective date. Uh number two, public hearing and introductory ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept and enter into a contract. From Texas Health and Human Services Commission for the Alzheimer's Disease and Related Dementias. A D R D grant amending the FY twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget by appropriating revenues and expenditures in the amount of. Hundred fifty thousand dollars with no match for the city of Laredo Public Health Department and amend the city. Of Laredo Public Health Department FY twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, full-time equivalent FTE position listing by creating one health educator supervisor. Two hundred and ten position for the term upon full execution of the contract through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Funds will be accounted for in the public, Laredo Public Health Department Fund A D R D Grant. Number three, public hearing and introductory ordinance authorizing the city manager accept to enter in a contract from. Texas Health and Human Services Commission for the HIV Clinical HIV STI Prevention and Community Health Centers Grant. Amending the FY twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget by appropriating revenues and expenditures in the amount of three hundred forty-five thousand, two hundred eighty-three dollars. With no match for the city of Laredo Public Health Department for the term from January one, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first. Uh twenty twenty-five funds will be accounted for in the Laredo Public Health Department Fund at HIV Clinical HIV STI Prevention and Community Health Centers Grant. Four, public hearing and introductory ordinance of the city of Laredo, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances. Chapter seven, Building and Building Regulations, Article One in General. Section seven dash two, same amendments, Code of Ordinances, Chapter eleven, Electricity, Article three. Permits, fees, inspection, section eleven dash forty-four, same fees, A six, amendments, Code of Ordinances. Chapter twenty-five Plumbing, Article one in general, section twenty-five dash eight, other inspections and fees. One, by establishing a foundation-only permit and permit fee for commercial and residential construction of two hundred thou- of two hundred dollars. And establishing a solar panel permit and solar panel permit fee for commercial and residential construction of two hundred dollars. And establishing a process for pre-development, meeting and pre-development service fee of two hundred dollars. Establishing an after-hour inspection process and then after-hour inspection fee, one hundred fifty dollars, establishing a partial inspection process and a partial inspection fee of seventy-five dollars. Providing a cumulative and repealing clause, providing a severability clause, providing for publication, providing for a penalty and declaring an effective date. Five, public hearing and introductory ordinance of the city of Laredo, Texas, amending chapter fifteen, Health and Sanitation, Article one in general. Of the Code of Ordinances, section fifteen dash five, fees for immunization services to update section fifteen dash five C, non-state private stock vaccines. To include insurance payment subsection one and cash and card payment subsections two and remove vaccine price schedule. Providing a severability clause, providing a savings clause and providing for an effective date. Six, public hearing and introductory ordinance authorizing the city manager to amend the city of Laredo FY twenty twenty-five airport operations budget. To accept and appropriate revenues and expenses by the amount of one million five hundred thirty-two thousand nine hundred and five dollars for Federal Aviation Administration Grant. Number three dash four eight dash zero one three six dash one oh seven dash twenty twenty-four. Said grant will be used for the purpose of preparing an airport master plan update and a pavement management program for the Laredo International Airport. Local matches, one hundred seventy thousand, three hundred twenty-three dollars. Funding will be allocated in the airport fund. Total project cost is one million seven hundred three thousand, two hundred twenty-eight dollars, providing for severability and providing for effective date. Seven, public hearing and introductory ordinance authorizing the city manager to amend the FY twenty-four, twenty-five solid waste budget by drawing down from fund balance and appropriating. Expenditures in the amount of five million four hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred dollars for rent and equipment purchases. Funding is available in the solid waste fund. Eight, public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the city of Laredo Land Development Code. Section twenty-four dash seven seven dot point one. Entitled Dimensional Standards to Remove The Minimum Lot Depth Requirement of Eighty-Five Feet in R dash one B. Single-family high-density district zoning districts and providing for for providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative, providing for a severability clause and providing for publication effective date. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the proposed ordinance amendment. Nine, we've already covered. Ten, public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning lot five, block. Ten sixty-nine, Eastern Division located at twelve oh four South Urban Avenue from B one Limited Business District to B three Community Business District. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the proposed zone change and staff supports application. Eleven, public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately three. Thousand one ninety-four point seven square feet out of lot two, block six six four, Eastern Division as further described in meets and bounds and attached exhibit A. Located at twelve fifteen Ryan Street from R three Mixed Residential District to B three Community Business District. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed zone change and staff does not support the application. Twelve, public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning lot two, block one Palm. Lake subdivision phase one located at eight one nine Rancho Viejo Drive from R one A. So single-family reduced area district to R two multifamily residential district. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the proposed zone change and staff supports the application. Thirteen, public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning lot twelve. And the west uh one half of lot uh eleven, block one thousand. Eastern Division located at eighteen oh two Mercer Street from R one Single Family Residential District to R three Mixed Residential District. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of those proposed zone change and staff did not support the application. Fourteen, public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately two point five acres. As further described by meets and bounds and attached exhibit A located at twenty-three, three, one, one FM fourteen seventy-two from A G. Ag Agricultural District to M one Light Manufacturing District. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the proposed zone change and staff supports the application. Fifteen, public hearing and introductory ordinance authorizing the city manager accept to grant. Approve a program appropriate funds from the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA in partnership with U S Customs and Border Protection C B P. For the FY twenty twenty-four Shelter and Services Program Competitive S S P dash C and amend the. FY twenty-four, twenty-five general fund budget by increasing revenues and expenses in the amount of three billion nine four thousand four eighty-three dollars. The grant performance prepared is from October one, twenty twenty-three to September thirty, twenty twenty-six. Grant funding will be used to provide services to individuals and families released from Department of Homeland Security custody. There's no cost share requirement. Funding will be available in the Special Fire Grants Fund. Sixteen, public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the city of Laredo fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh capital improvements fund by appropriating revenues and expenditures and authorizing the city manager to implement said budget amendment for the finalization of the. Original design of the north central ADA parking amount of five hundred fifty thousand that shall include the extension of the existing parking lot past. Sweden Lane and various amenities for the inclusive play area. Funds will be from a donation provided by Robert P. Gutierrez. Seventeen, public hearing and introductory ordinance amending chapter twenty-three, section twenty-three dash six of the Code of Ordinances. Of the city of Laredo to amend the field rental fees to a hundred fifty dollars per field, thirty-five dollars for lights, forty dollars for marking. Hundred fifty dollars for concession deposit of forty percent of total rental fees and seven hundred. a hundred fifty dollars for concession deposit of forty percent of total rental fees, and seven hundred and fifty dollars for complex rental rate. Revenues for are from funds generated by the field rental fees and will be used for supplies and maintenance of the facilities containing a savings clause, containing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. New fees will be deposited into General Fund and Recreation Fund. Eighteen, public hearing and introductory ordinance of the city of Laredo, Texas authorizing promissory note in the aggregate principal amount of four million one hundred fifteen thousand together with a contract for loan guarantee assistance under Section one oh eight of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy four as amended forty two U S C Section fifty three oh eight in connection therewith, providing for findings. Nineteen, public hearing and introductory ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept and execute a grant as a sub recipient awarded by the Environmental Protection Agency, E P A on behalf of the Texas Energy Poverty Research Institute, T P R in the amount of five million one hundred forty three thousand, nine hundred ninety one dollars with no match, and amending the Community Development Housing Rehabilitation Fund F Y twenty twenty five annual budget for the Solar For All Fund by appropriating revenues and expenditures in the amount of five million one hundred forty three thousand, nine hundred ninety one dollars. This grant will provide two full-time equivalent F T E Senior Office Assistant Positions. Funding for the city of Laredo Solar For All Program will deliver direct energy bill savings by providing financial assistance for the installation of solar panels on homes for low-income households. Twenty, public hearing and introductory ordinance amending ordinance number twenty sixteen dash O dash zero one two which establishes the adoption of a pet agreement for all the city of Laredo Airport Federal Acquisition Regulation for Part one fifty Noise Compatibility Program and the Jose A Flores duplexes, single-family units, and managed by the Community Development Municipal Housing Division by revising the terms and conditions of the agreement by which tenants are allowed to keep pets.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to have Mr. Glenn reread all these.
I have to admit, I I was taking my time reading, so you all don't have much time to argue, so I'm trying to parent trap you.
You did your good deed of the day, sir.
All right, let's go with number one, for or against?
For or against?
For or against?
Motion to close and introduce.
Okay. Number two, for or against?
All of them.
All of them in favor? All of those in favor, yes.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Number two, for or against? For or against? For or against?
Motion to close and introduce.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass. Number three, for or against? For or against? For or against?
Motion to close and introduce.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Number four, for or against? For or against? For or against?
There's no discussion once we close it, so I think she needs to be heard as for or against. Question, Mayor's point of order to pass.
I think we already passed that, all right.
Well, we haven't voted on it. Now she can.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, the uh, Mr. Neb, if if you could answer a question about is in the middle of this section, um establishing a process for pre-development meeting and pre-development service fee of two hundred dollars for the building department? Okay, thank you. Um, is is this something that has existed before and is this a um? Does this allow for some initial contact and information exchange before this fee kicks in?
This is, the service has been provided pretty much always. Um, whereas people could, applicants could come in and ask for a meeting with us and that we would call in sort of all the troops and review everything, but it was free. So it was just a a complimentary service that we would provide, but it is becoming sort of more and more frequent, and it is something that when you're having three or four directors around a table with, you know, multiple staff, it does.
Understood.
So the fee is new.
Is there a way, is or is there a a mechanism for applicants to come in and get some very basic information before they proceed? It just seems to be a barrier if in order to talk to anyone at the building department, you must pay two hundred dollars.
No, I, that is not how we envisioned it.
Okay.
It it was, I mean, you know, we answer the phone talk. She's been waiting the whole night to do to do this.
Sorry to catch you off guard.
So here's a real expert on that. But but to her question, I don't know if you heard it. Um, she was concerned that people wouldn't be able to come in and ask us questions prior to, you know, having this. That's not true.
Yeah, no, no, no. Uh, we can take emails, phone calls if it's any uh in town. This is mainly for out of town. Uh, they really like the process that we're doing for pre-development, helping them how with the planning works on the zoning and all that good stuff, uh guiding them with engineering, how it works prior to the project.
This is, this is a next level thing. This is an initial, an initial ask for information and and how they can get their project advanced.
Correct.
And just information like that. This is, you've already kind of covered basics and you're going in a little bit deeper.
We're already doing this, but we don't charge.
Okay.
But we still will assist them over the phone through email.
Thank you. I think it was just the pre-development uh wording. I just wanted to make sure there aren't additional barriers to just getting some basic information.
It does not preclude anyone from picking up the phone and giving us an.
I'll make a motion to close and introduce.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Number five, for or against? For or against? For or against?
Motion to close and introduce.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Number six, for or again, for or against?
Motion to close and introduce.
Motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Number seven, for or against? For or against? For or against?
Motion to close and introduce.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion opposed? Motion pass. Number eight, for or against? For or against? For or against?
Motion to close and introduce.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
Number ten.
Number ten. We already did number nine. Number ten, for or against? For or against? For or against?
Right, number ten.
It's number ten. For. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Number eleven, for or against? For or against? For or against?
I have a question. Are the um property owners here?
We we did advise everybody. We called everybody the day of.
I'm assuming staff is denying this because it's in the neighborhood, right? It's not on McPherson. It's next to the.
That is correct.
Snack shop?
Yeah, we do have it right here.
And they're, I'm assuming, wanting to do a car lot? This is the only thing I can think of. Oh, used to be a used car lot. And it's a little strip, right?
Yeah. See, it it is, this is McPherson right here. This is Pinguinos, and this is the lot, right? This is already B three. Half of it is already B three. This is the half that they're trying to rezone, so they want.
What is the half that's currently B three, Ms. Garra, being utilized for?
It's vacant right now.
Do they own it?
Yes.
So are they asking for this B three to have a bigger space for the used car lot or what's the reasoning?
They just want the, they want to be able to unify the lot under the B three zone to allow for a car lot use.
That's why, so they have B three, now they want to have the other half be B three so they can
That's correct.
Use both lots as a whole.
Well, it's it's not both, it's both halves, yes.
Both halves for the same purpose?
Yes.
And they specifically have said that it's for a used car lot?
Yes.
The property's so small that I have an issue with it, especially because it's all residential, right? It's it's on Ryan.
It it is. It abuts a residence to the to the east and then directly in front as well.
Anyone opposed to this?
Uh, I don't believe so. Zero, zero. Yeah, this went to count, this went to P and Z um last year and they recommended uh denial at that time. However, this time they rethought it and recommended in favor.
Um, I'm going to make a motion to table since the owners are not here.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Number twelve, for or against? For or against? For or against?
Motion to close and introduce.
Motion second. Okay. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Number thirteen, for or against? For or against? For or against?
Motion to close and introduce.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Fourteen, for or against? For or against? For or against?
Second, motion to close and introduce?
Motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion pass. Fifteen, for or against? For or against? For or against?
Motion to close and introduce.
Second. Motion second, all in favor? Motion pass. Nobody against. Number sixteen, for or against? For or against? For or against?
Motion to close and introduce.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. Number seventeen, for or against? For or against? For or against?
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, is someone here from Parks? Oh, Mr. Thomas. Uh, included in in these amending the fees, you have forty dollars for marking uh as a fee. How, and I'm assuming um that is for fields?
Yes, ma'am.
How does this money um compare to the money that's being charged for each individual player in the youth sports leagues?
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Council, G N G, Thomas Parks, Director. So thi- this is for, these forty dollars is for either for, let's say, a softball, somebody wants to host a softball tournament. These are tournaments. Somebody wants to host a softball tournament, somebody wants to host a little league tournament or or any other soccer tournament.
It's a special, it's a special use.
That's correct. It's for special uses. So if somebody wants to come and use Benavidez softball and they want to mark, they want us to mark the fields, we're raising now the forty dollars per field.
Okay.
This has nothing to do with the leagues. The leagues is is.
No league play.
No, no, no league play. This is just on tournaments.
The youth sports fee of ten dollars, that's in a different pot for different function.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
I'll I'll make a motion to close and introduce.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Number eighteen, for or again? For or against? For or against?
May I clarify? Let me clarify something. So um, uh, Mr. Neb, in the materials that we got and in the way that this reads, there's no indication that this is for the Southern Hotel Affordable Housing Rehabilitation Project, but once you go into the file, you can find that listed on some document. But I just wanted the public to know this is for the Southern Hotel Affordable Housing Rehabilitation Project. I'll I'll make a motion to close and introduce.
Second.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Number nineteen, for or against? For or against? For or against? Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. And number twenty, for or against? For or against? For or against?
Motion to close and introduce.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, Mayor, the motion extends the meeting to eleven. I know there's people waiting, so I just want to make sure they don't wait and not get seen, so.
Motion passes. All right. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion pass.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to um for council, council to introduce introductory ordinance twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, and twenty four. Motion to approve final reading of ordinances twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, thirty, thirty one, thirty two, thirty three, thirty four, thirty five, thirty six, thirty seven, and thirty eight.
Second.
Mayor?
If I may, uh, need an amendment on number twenty nine, if I may, can I read it to to the record?
Please, yes.
So I'll make, uh, my motion will exclude twenty nine and then we'll take twenty nine individually, Mr. Mayor.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
We have twenty nine before us.
Um, we're seeking an amendment to the final reading of number twenty nine. A correction is needed on the final ordinance under Section thirty one dash ninety seven. Fees uh a strike through was made by staff by error under letter E Sewer Services. Uh, number eleven, septic tanks disposal fee. It was for forty dollars for every thousand gallons removing, uh, they were removing this fee. This fee is for the septic charge and needs to be left in the ordinance. Leaving this fee will also change the numbering of the items. Septic tank disposal fee will become number five instead of number eleven, and the following two fees will become number six and seven, so we'd like that correction.
Motion to approve the item as read into the record and clarified by Assistant City Manager Steve Lundin.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve consent agenda items number thirty nine, forty, forty one, forty two, forty three, forty four, forty five, forty six, forty seven, forty eight, forty nine, fifty, fifty one. Fifty, retract uh retracting fifty one, continue to approve fifty two, fifty three, fifty four, fifty five, fifty seven, fifty eight, fifty nine, sixty, sixty one, sixty two, sixty three, sixty four, sixty five, sixty, sixty six, sixty seven, sixty eight, sixty nine, seventy, seventy one, seventy two, seventy three, seventy, seventy three, seventy five, seventy six, seventy seven, seventy eight, seventy nine, eighty, eighty one, eighty two, eighty three, eighty four, eighty five, eighty six, eighty seven, eighty eight, eighty nine, ninety, ninety one, ninety two, ninety four, ninety five, ninety six, ninety seven, ninety eight, ninety nine, one hundred, one oh one, one oh two, one oh three, one oh four, one oh five, and one oh six. Redacting one oh three, so.
Um, I want to pull the the bridge items, uh, forty two, forty three, forty four, and items fifty two and fifty three, and fifty eight.
All right, and I'm going to repeat my motion to approve all the consent agenda items with the exception of forty two, forty three, forty four, fifty one, fifty two, fifty three, fifty eight, seventy four, ninety three, and one oh three.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
We're at forty two.
All right. Go forty two.
Mayor, um, I know that staff had asked that executive session was time sensitive as well. Um, and we're in the middle of approving all these items. Do we want to take executive session first? I'll make a motion to bring up executive session, items one ten, eleven, and one twelve.
Second. Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion pass.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for council to go into executive session for items one ten, one eleven, and one twelve pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five five one point zero seven six, subsection one to deliberate the deployment of specific occasions for implementation of security personnel or devices uh to strategically combat crime tense uh trends and high highest priorities with the city to include the um police chief, management, and anybody else deemed appropriate necessary by staff and legal. Freedom number eleven under Texas Government Code Section five five one point zero seven two, deliberation regarding real property to discuss possible condemnation of real uh property located at twelve eighteen Matamoro Street and to include one twelve um under Section uh Texas Government Code Section five five one point zero seven one, subsection one, subsection A, to discuss potential litigation by a former employee. Um, again, to include any staff needed uh for this discussion as requested by the city manager and our city attorney.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Executive session.
Legal and staff to proceed accordingly.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
Freedom number twelve, for purpose of the record, we acknowledge that we have received um the correspondence from legal counsel of uh Karina Lisonda, and we authorize the city manager and staff to proceed accordingly.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to recess as the Laredo City Council and convene as the Laredo Mass Transit Board.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
Motion to approve items one thirteen and one fourteen.
Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
Motion to adjourn as the Laredo Mass Transit Board and reconvene as the Laredo City Council.
Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
Motion to bring up supplemental item of appointments. I'm making a motion to bring up supplemental agenda appointments.
The motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I have for discussion, Mayor?
It's just to bring up.
It's an appointment.
Just to bring up, so motion pass.
Okay, motion pass.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve your appointment on the supplemental agenda. Um, and I have a question now that there's a second.
Okay.
May I be ready?
Yes, motion second. Go ahead.
Mayor, um, my question is, there are three members of the council that, um, represent the city of Laredo and the MPO. My question is, who would Councilmember Rangel replace?
Uh, councilwoman.
Okay, thank you.
May I be heard?
Yes, go ahead.
So, um, these appointments are for a two-year term. That term will finish in February of twenty-twenty-five. So, I am being asked to be replaced, which is the mayor's prerogative, um, for performance earning. And I just wanted to be clear that in my role as MP, as an MPO, uh, member of the, of, of the organization, that I have tried to fulfill my duties to the best of my ability. I have spoken in front of the Texas Transport, Transportation Committee in Austin two times. I have gone to the Border Trade Alliance Committee meeting in McAllen, and I've been at another one here in Laredo. I was asked to be on the active transportation conference panel in Austin this past September, which I attended along with other members of the MPO. I've attended border connectivity meetings that have been held here in Laredo with the Texas Department of Transportation, and I was at some, the only member of, um, council member of the MPO there. I've attended the Vision Zero public meetings, the I sixty-nine, the Mine Zero, the Y C O Road public meetings. So, I have fulfilled my requirements as a member of the MPO. It is the mayor's prerogative to choose members. Generally speaking, I find it unusual that it is being done four months before my natural end of term. And I do see that there has been comments made to me, and I must agree, that I do feel that this is somewhat vindictive for what's going on outside in the political realm. So, I will admit that this is the mayor's prerogative, and I just wanted to make clear that I believe that I have fulfilled my duties as a member of the MPO during my time served. Thank you.
And thank you very much for your service. We appreciate what you did. And, uh, we appoint people and we change them around. So, but thank you very much for your service, and we appreciate that. We appreciate your comments also.
May I be, uh, may I be direct?
Yes.
Um, I, I do, um, recognize, um, also your change in reappointment, especially with the four or five bridge and the traffic and growth that we're going to start seeing much more in South Laredo. I know Councilmember Rangel represents, um, the South, and I think it's important that the South has a voice um, in this MPO as it pertains to city representation. I will amend my motion to, um, include that the replacement would be to replace Councilmember Melissa Cigarua for the unexpired term and for Councilmember Rangel to continue serving a full term after that.
Is that your motion?
That's my amendment, yes.
Okay. Motion?
There's a second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
Mr. Mayor, I know that the next item is consent item number forty-two. However, staff is telling us that one oh three needs to be heard before the meeting is adjourned. So, I ask that we, I make a motion that we would bring up item one oh three.
Second. Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
I'll make a motion to approve item one oh three, so we can initiate any type of discussion that, um, I think Councilmember Elisa Cigarua requested.
Motion second. All in favor?
No, we have discussion.
No discussion. Go ahead.
Mr., well, city manager or, um, Ms. Cantu, was there an RFQ, um, for this item?
For this item? Yeah, we, we advertised for it and we did post it on the city's webpage, and then we, we have the engineer's recommendation on this.
And, and just this clarification, it was an RFP.
Or RFP, thank you for the clarification. Um, but it, correct me if I'm wrong, was it, was it only seven days that it was out?
No, yeah, more, plenty, more than thirty days. It was about forty-five days.
So, um, do, do we have, um, chlorine dioxide anywhere currently in neighboring water systems in, in the Rio Grande?
Uh, yes. Uh, we do use, uh, chlorine dioxide. Well, McAllen. McAllen does use chlorine dioxide. There's other, other municipalities that do.
In the Rado.
The top of my head as well, um. Well, in the Rado, no. Well, we would, in the Rio Grande, yes, but not in the Rado. We, we are the only water system in the Rado aside from.
So.
Rio Grande, I would join.
Thank you. Um, so I don't ever recall having this item, well, this being presented at council before and, um.
Mr. Mayor, I can answer that. We brought it, uh, to council multiple times every month when we have the ARPA report to you that, uh, the ARPA project included utilities coming forward in October for the chlorine dioxide project.
Okay, then I, I apologize.
Yeah, we've been bringing it forward. Councilmember Mayor.
And just, just as a piece of mind, this is part of the twenty-twenty-one efforts, uh, we engaged last year uh, around this time, September. That was amendment to our contract. We finalized the design. Um, and this will bring benefits, uh, have, uh, increased stable, uh, chloramine in the system, so it means we're going to flush less because we have more stable chloramine. It'll last longer, the disinfectant. It'll decrease our disinfection byproducts. So, that'll help, and it also help with taste and odor. So, all those things I think are very, very valuable for our water treatment um, and our water system.
And has the new interim director been briefed on this and able to review the engineering report and the bid?
He has not. Mayor, council member, looked at any of the projects yet. Uh, at, one of our goals is to get him deep into the projects to make sure that we align and make sure that the projects that are being proposed from the former director are in line with the vision of the future. And so ultimately, uh, this item here is an item that has been in the works for a period of time, and we're, we're recommending approval to move past this because of our timelines with the ARPA funding and the amount of money that it is uh, to, to go ahead and move forward with it, uh, as proposed, and, uh, we will also be taking a deep dive into all utility projects.
Thank you. And, um, so just in reading the, the attached, um, document, is there, who, who's the manufacturer for the chlorine dioxide?
I believe it's going to be Evoca. They're one, Evoca.
Evoca.
Evoca is going to be the, the manufacturer for the onsite generation. Uh, they're one of the largest providers and they have one of the leading experts internationally for chlorine dioxide. So, I would, you know, I'll hardly stand behind them.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
We go now to item forty, forty-two?
Forty-two.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Kent Richard, interim director for Bridge Department. Um, item forty-two is basically tied in also with item number forty-three. They're related together. Forty-two is the hardware and the firewall, and forty-three is to installing of the data circuits. This is for the network redundancy for, to maintain our system operations at all bridges. It's kind of like, um, a generator with a transfer switch. Our electricity goes out, the transfer switch will kick in, and the generator will kick in. That way, we will not lose any down, downtime for the, for our system whatsoever. If I may, I'd like to pull in Mr. Joe Rivetta from RT Department. It would be him and his staff that would be working on this project to get us up to par where we want to go forward with.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Joe Rivetta, IST Director for the record. Yes, as, as Kent mentioned, what we're doing here is we're, we're actually, uh, not only putting data circuits at each, redundant data circuits in each one of the bridges, but the hardware involved here are the firewall devices, again, one per bridge to secure that network. As you all know, again, uh, cybersecurity is of the utmost importance for IT, and so the firewall devices will secure the traffic on, on all four bridges. But again, this is for redundancy to try to minimize, uh, any potential for downtime, uh, for their operations. This is nothing new. It's, it's a common practice across IT departments. Uh, putting in redundant circuits for critical operations is always highly recommended. So, that's what we're doing here.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
The, um, the question I have is, you know, I don't remember ever talking about this project at all, and I know Ms. Limon retired. And we never talked about these projects.
If I, if I may, the conversation did start with Ms. Limon initially. Several months back, I'm not sure, um, I guess we hadn't brought it to this venue or to this, uh, uh, to this group. But, uh, the conversation did actually begin with Ms. Limon myself.
Like, because, you know, we, we hadn't, we hadn't talked about it. I was just wondering where it came from, and then also does it involve anything having to do with, um, creating like the Wi-Fi at the bridge and, and for the automatic, um, charging of the accounts to the, 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 the system that we use, whether the, that they use, like the, 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 the issues that we've discussed at the Port of Entry Advisory Committee, those connectivity issues, the technological issues with the programs that we use. I'm just curious to know why this one came up on the agenda and none of those items that we have been talking about for years. I, I just didn't know if they were connected or where we stand on those other issues.
So, so part of what you said does connect. So, this is again, network redundancy for the bridges to maintain operations. As far as specifically to your question about Wi-Fi, that's a separate project IT is working on. We are trying to get a good, across-the-board Wi-Fi, uh, uh, network in, in place for all of our facilities. So, the idea and what we're shooting for with that is that as visitors to any of our sites, are that Wi-Fi network that we're planning on establishing, you'll be able to walk into any city, uh, facility and seamlessly connect to that Wi-Fi if you're an internal user, that being council members, uh, staff. Uh, and then as, and then as part of that, we'll also have a good guest Wi-Fi that where our visitors, for example, dignitaries to the bridge, will be able to connect to that, but that is a, actually a separate project. It does not, it's not involved in what we're talking about here today.
Yes, go ahead.
So, the Wi-Fi wasn't for us. It was for when the drivers get there and they don't have sufficient funds, and we need to charge automatically their cards for that system that we have, that we have implemented to reduce the, the insufficient fund turnarounds. Sometimes it's hard to charge the account because the bridge has very poor connectivity with internet. And so, is that part of this?
That, so, um, I was not aware of that request, council member, council member. Um, I will have to look into that. Um, I believe, don't we have, don't we have the badges on that they use that they scan as they come across? So, I'm going to have to research that specifically a bit more to see what we can do around that. If it, that would, that, as you said, sounds like a Wi-Fi-related technology, and we can get there. I just need to do some research on that for you.
Oh, no, sorry. Do you want to finish? I just was in it.
Go ahead.
To, to ask if we could move to recess the meeting till, for tomorrow?
Second.
Do we have time?
There's a motion, a second.
There's a motion, a second. All in favor? One, two, three. Opposed? One, two, three, four.
And, Mr. Mayor, our, our recommendation is for approval of this item, so we can move forward and get this part done that, that we need to, to move forward. Make a motion to approve items forty-two, forty-three, and forty-four.
Second. Motion second. All in favor?
Motion to approve.
Move up and approve items fifty-two to fifty-eight.
But we're, we're in the middle of a vote.
Oh, do you have, I thought it already passed?
Nope.
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
Second.
Motion.
Mayor, well, I have a problem with fifty-two and fifty-three, but we need to talk about it, uh, I guess at the next meeting because it's the Fascon Treehouse project.
Okay.
I, I would like to actually like to table fifty-two and fifty-three for the next meeting.
Second.
A motion. Table trumps any motion as a point of order.
Okay. Motion, any second?
Second. To table fifty-two and fifty-three.
All right. All in favor?